Trustee Paulus?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Mary Hansen?
Here. Under my report, the only thing I have on my report, I'd like to move up a couple items on the agenda tonight. I'd like to move item nine to number five and move item number 10 to number six. So if the board's okay with that, I'm gonna move those two items. Other than that, uh, report. So any citizens wishing to address the board clerk remind?
I did not receive any citizen comments.
Okay, great. Okay, we have one item on the consent agenda tonight, and that would be for the approval of the November ninth, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes as presented. I'll ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Okay, it was motioned by trustee Pierce. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, that's seconded by trustee Dominiac. Do I have any questions on the minutes trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Okay trustee Masick?
Yeah, as I stated prior, a number eleven, that the donation be put into the minutes. So there's, there's a record of that donation in the minutes?
Oh, item on the, on the minutes from?
Yeah, for the cameras.
Okay. Okay, no, the clerk will note that. Any other question?
No, as long as, as long as the minutes are changed and so that money donation, so there's a record of.
And can we record the amount for trustee Masick? And I would change my motion to, to amend my motion to match his, his request.
I'll second that amendment.
What was the amount trustee Masick?
Well, there's, there's two, there's two amounts. There's two amounts equalling three thousand dollars. The first amount for the body cameras was fifteen hundred dollars. Chief Gutcher also spent four, or and he just did it for riot helmets was another donation totaling three thousand dollars.
Okay, we'll have her note that then, okay.
And the donation, there is, now they came out, the donation came out from me, not a foundation of country companies. There's no such company as country companies. It's country financial and.
Okay duly noted, thank you. Any questions trustee else?
Questions, your honor.
Okay trustee Dominiac?
None, your honor.
Okay, thank you trustee Paulus?
No questions.
Okay, and trustee Johnson?
No, your honor.
Okay clerk take roll please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Masick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Paulus?
Abstaining, I wasn't at the meeting.
He's abstaining, he wasn't here.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, five are voting yes, one is abstaining, the motion's carried. Consideration to ratify the November twenty third, twenty twenty payments of accounts paid by staff. I'll need a motion in a second.
I move to ratify payment of accounts payable in the amount of three hundred sixty nine thousand, four hundred thirty three dollars and forty four cents.
Motion made by trustee Paulus, do I have a second?
Second.
And that was seconded by trustee Yost. Any questions trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Okay trustee Masick?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Yost?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
None, your honor.
Okay trustee Paulus?
No questions, your honor.
And trustee Johnson?
Uh, no questions, your honor.
Okay, roll call please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masick? Masick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, six voting yes, no, no's motions carried. Consideration of accounts payable was prepared by staff.
I move to approve payment of accounts payable in the amount of one hundred thousand, six hundred ninety nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Paulus, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Johnson, any questions trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Okay trustee Masick?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Yost?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
None, your honor.
Trustee Paulus?
No questions, your honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay clerk take roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, that's six voting yes, no, no's motions carried. Consideration of emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency relating to coronavirus. That's ordinance number twenty dash twelve dash forty two. Do I have a motion? Okay, this motion by trustee Yost, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay trustee Pierce seconded, any questions trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Okay trustee Masick?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Yost?
No questions, your honor.
Uh trustee Dominiac?
None, your honor.
Okay trustee Paulus?
No questions, your honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, roll call please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, six voting yes, the motion's carried. Next item is item number nine. Is consideration of resolution approving a facade improvement grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for station fifty one, located at eight eighty three main street, resolution twenty dash sixty one. Michael, that was in our packets.
Yes, thank you, your honor. This matter comes before you this evening for a request for a facade grant. The applicant is proposing a proposed new construction of a new restaurant, what was formerly known as David's Bistro. The address is eight eighty three main street. This matter came before you a number of months ago with a presentation to the committee of the whole. As you know, back in two thousand and sixteen, the village board approved a facade program. The applicant is coming for you this evening for a request for a one hundred thousand dollar facade grant. That is consistent with the maximum amount that the program affords. As you recall, it's a matching program, a fifty fifty program. So very briefly, I wanted to kind of walk you through the applicant's proposal. And then I'm going to turn over to Mr. Schomburger, who will be able to discuss his specific plans and his business plan itself. As you know, David's Bistro has been vacant for a number of months. The applicant is proposing an extensive facade renovation. You have that in your packet. There are, I think, four or five different elevations. It would be the extensive elevation itself. Overall, the applicant is proposing to invest approximately four hundred thousand dollars into this proposed new restaurant in downtown Antioch, specifically related to the facade. This would be the most significant facade improvement since the program was created. Specifically, this proposed facade would be, contain the total cost of approximately two hundred and four thousand dollars. Therefore, based on villagers requested facade match, would constitute approximately twenty, twenty-five percent of their overall cost of this project itself. With regards to the proposal itself, over, I provide you a breakdown with regards to exterior labor, exterior materials, interior labor and interior materials. So overall, the overall project comes to specifically three hundred ninety two thousand, almost four hundred thousand dollars. It's a significant investment in downtown Antioch. Whenever you look at the facade grant, it's always imperative to comply or make sure that the program's consistent with the intent of the program. The general intent of the program was to restore the current existing historic buildings in downtown Antioch. I have shown you a historic picture of this original building, eight eighty two main street. Staff did go through our analysis as it relates to historical analysis of whether the applicant's proposed facade renovations would be consistent with the character. David's Bistro has incorporate a number of contemporary elements, which probably were improved in nineteen sixties or nineteen seventies, which is clearly not consistent with the historical character of the building. Specifically applicant would be introducing a new extensive brick on the first floor. They'd be bringing back store bays. They would be introducing a number of historical elements along with historical wood doors. Our overall analysis is this proposal is consistent with the facade grant as it relates to the proposed facade guidelines. With regards to fiscal impact, this is a significant amount of money. It would be the largest facade grant since a program, as I've already identified, since the program was created. But staff would submit respectfully on that while the facade grant is substantial, the overall impact of this proposed business would have a major impact on continue to attract visitors to downtown Antioch. We consider this as a new anchor commercial business. It would be a major anchor on along the northern perimeter of our main street corridor. As you know, David's Bistro has been vacant for a number of months. So the applicant is proposing a significant investment, not only with regards to facade, but they're also proposing a new dining configuration, a new kitchen, new interiors throughout the area, new floors and finishes. So there is a significant investment itself. Overall concept of the applicant, we, we submit is generally consistent with villagers' long-term plans for Antioch to attract more visitors and to increase street traffic on our main street. So currently, as it relates to the current budget, there is approximately eight thousand dollar balance on in our facade and business grant program. Now, there is some discussion about using that program, that monies or those funds for our small business grant program, which we'll discuss a little bit later this evening. So conceptually, I would defer to the finance director, but this, this, this fund could come either from our general fund or our business district. So with that, I will conclude my staff report. Board has any questions or they would like to listen, listen to the applicant. I'm sure Mr. Schomburger would be more than happy to provide some additional illumination, additional information pertaining to this facade grants. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Hey, I'll leave it up to the board. Would you like to hear from Chris, the proprietor? He is on the call. So if the board's got any questions, they can direct it right toward Chris himself. It is a substantial amount of money, so I think the board probably might have some, some questions for you, Chris. So that being said, trustee Pierce, any questions?
Well, I was hoping to hear from Chris first, then be able to ask questions. I got, I got several questions about this, but I think between Michael and Chris would be nice. I was hoping Michael could show pictures of what we're talking about while we're on this Zoom call, so the audience could see what we're contemplating doing to the north end. But I'd like to hear from Chris first.
Okay, so Chris, maybe you could, before we get to the trustees, maybe you can, you know, at least communicate with the board why you chose Antioch. I know we had a meeting, a few meetings with you and you had stated the attraction. So let's, let's hear what, what attracted you to the village of Antioch.
Yeah, so thank you guys for taking the time to hear my story. So I just moved to the, to the north area here, I'm right here in Salem. As most of you guys know, I do own three restaurants currently. We actually just opened up our third location eight days ago in Kenosha. So we opened up last Friday. I'm proud to say that we're, we opened up a restaurant in the middle of a pandemic. It's been crazy. It's, it's Wisconsin, so things are a little different up there, but it's been awesome up there and we're doing well. So I was attracted to Antioch. I do a lot of events in Antioch with our current company, barbecue productions. We've done a lot of festivals and parades with you guys. The, the town of Antioch, I, I think is awesome in the mere fact of there's, there's a lot of originality with the town. I think it's cool that it's one of the last few towns in the area that has a historical downtown area. I'm a big fan of the downtown strip of Antioch. My wife and I have always said that if there was ever an opportunity to do something downtown, that Antioch would be a place that we would like to do. I think as I discussed before with the mayor and a couple other people that I really like, like downtown Grayslake and downtown Antioch. It has that, just that old town feel. My grandparents are from a small town in Wisconsin called Monaco, Wisconsin. And in Monaco, Wisconsin, same exact thing, there's this, there's a small little downtown area where you walk shop to shop and people are attracted to that and so are we. The, the idea of, of opening up station fifty one came shortly after talking to David and David retiring. I've been a big fan of David's for a long time. He's actually somebody that I looked up to growing up as a child. And so when his restaurant became available, I thought it'd be cool to do something in Antioch, especially downtown area, especially because it's a town that I, that we enjoy doing events in and we have a lot of success in with our company. The idea of station fifty one, as I presented to you guys, I think it was two months ago in October, same exact facade that I, that I showed you guys at the board meeting I did in October. We just obviously went in a little bit more in depth on the inside, changing some things on the inside to bring more of that firehouse feel. But I wanted to create something that's never been done before. I think that Antioch has a lot of great restaurants currently, and I think David's restaurant was awesome and sad to see it go. It's one of my favorites. But we want to do something completely different that's never been done before. Everybody asked if we're gonna do barbecue productions and unfortunately, I think it's too close to Kenosha and Grayslake, the third lake, to kind of take away from those customers that we have going there. So we want to do something that's unique and different and never been done before. So my wife is, my wife's a big fan of fire, fire departments and fire trucks. I used to work for Round the Beach Police for a couple of years as a community service officer. So my other restaurants were heavily geared towards supporting law enforcement and backing law enforcement and first responders. So we wanted to do something for our brothers in red, and so we created station fifty one truck company. The restaurant concept itself, like I said, is something different that's never been done before. It's gonna be a virtual digital food truck restaurant. Again, same thing I talked about in the October board meeting. You're gonna come into the restaurant and you'll order, not order, but you'll have a digital device such as an iPad or tablet. And on that will be food trucks, be five or six different food trucks each month. One truck will drive across the screen and as the menu opens up on that truck, that menu of whatever's from that food truck will be on that food truck. As the trucks, as you swipe on the, on the menu, the next truck will come up onto the screen and that food truck's menu will be on there. So there could be six, five, six, seven concepts a month. And then once a month, one truck would drive off and then another truck would drive on. So, you know, one month you might have the lobster truck, we might have a sushi truck, we might have a taco truck. Just, these are just some ideas of what we've thrown out there. The other thing that's really cool about it is that we've thought about and we've talked with some other restaurants from other towns is being able to license other town, I'm sorry, license other restaurants and their brand in their menu at our restaurant. So we'll say, for example, Primo and Gurney, a good friend of ours, the Coyotes. You know, we might be able to partner with them and bring six of their top menu items to our restaurant and license their, their menu, license their, their menu and sell a primo food truck. And then we'd give a cutback to them and that way they can also test out the waters and see, A, how it would work in a restaurant like ours, or B, how it would work in, in the town of Antioch. The other thing that's cool about it is it allows our community to be able to be totally interactive with the restaurant. So as the community starts talking and saying, hey, we want to see, again, I'm just throwing ideas out there, but a sushi truck. Within one month, our chef and our corner team will create a sushi truck and then that fine month, we can create a sushi truck. Lastly, one of my ideas was, is when we open up, which we're slated for tentative open date of April, is our very first guest food truck that we'd like to have is the David's Bistro truck. And what this would allow us to do is allow David to come back one last time for thirty days, have some of his top few food items from his restaurant, the meals come in, work with us for thirty days, say hi to everybody, and then after thirty days, his truck would ride off into the sunset and he'd retire. So again, our concept is, is unique, it's different. The inside of it's gonna be a total firehouse feel, kind of like the Molly's from Chicago Fire, if you've ever seen that. The, the draft beer system is really cool. It's gonna be two fire hydrants and the beer gets delivered to the fire hydrants. We have fire hoses. We're working with trying to, we're speaking with somebody right now from the Masonic Lodge about getting some architectural pieces from nine eleven. We'd like to be able to showcase that inside of the restaurant as a dedication and memorial back to nine eleven and the firefighters who lost their lives in the line of duty. So there's a lot of cool things that we're doing that I would love to bring to the town of Antioch. And I think that when I think of the town of Antioch, I think of families, I think of community. And I think that this brand and this restaurant and our concept fits the brand, I'm sorry, fits the community and our brand together. And I think it'd be a great concept for your town.
Thank you, Chris. Is that some information trustee Pierce?
That is some information, but maybe Joy or Michael can help with this, this part of it because I really like his concept and I like the, what we see on the screen. And I like the excitement this will bring to the north end of main street and, and the foot traffic it brings. And I think it fulfills the question people had in the past, what are we doing to bring businesses to Antioch? But we're talking a hundred thousand dollars here. What are we expecting in return on that hundred thousand dollars? Is there a sales tax return every, every year or month? There's a certain foot traffic expected? What are the sales expected, you know? What are we doing to justify a hundred thousand dollars other than a nice, nice drawing on the, the screen?
So I think that's a very good question. I'm glad you brought it up. I think Chris can specifically outline the general sales that are significant. Maybe I'll turn over to Chris. I think he has, we did ask him to identify that potentially. So maybe at this point, Chris, you want, wants generally to generally outline the projected type of revenue you're looking at?
Yeah, so just basing this off of, obviously, current numbers of what we do with our other restaurants and averages based on plate costs, food costs, labor costs and pork cost. So our first restaurant, which is barbecue productions in Third Lake, we had forty-four seats. And then after eight months, we grew to eighty seats, which is about, excuse me, about what we have. Actually, we have a little bit more. But we did, our first year at Third Lake, we did just shy of two million dollars. We did like one point nine five. After our first year at our Third Lake store, again, same amount of seats, we did two point four million. And then at year three, we did two point nine million. Our store that we just opened up in Kenosha, again, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so you know, there, there is obviously restrictions. I have a little bit more seats in my Kenosha store, but we just finished our first week and we did just shy of fifty thousand dollars in sales. I did the math on that, equated to one point four, one point five million. But again, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so you know, there isn't a lot of people opening restaurants currently in the middle of a pandemic. So it, it's hard to kind of figure out what those numbers are gonna be because, you know, there's still stuff that's obviously happening, there's restrictions in Wisconsin, just like there's restrictions here. But we're anticipating anywhere between, obviously, when we open, we're hoping that some of the restrictions will be lifted a little bit. But our, our goal and our projections based on pandemic numbers would end in between one point seven five and one point nine million dollars our first year. And then also too, just want to add to, one thing that I thought was something that was imperative is the building that we're renovating, David's Bistro, is two buildings. That was one thing that I didn't realize when we were talking to David is that there's actually two buildings. It's the Masonic Brothers Building as the Masons, I think it's called, and then also Rich Geldman's building. So there is two buildings that we'd be renovating to match the current building that's there and also bring some of the historical values back. We, we were able to get some nice pictures from Mike and the, that there was a book that we got from the early nineteen hundreds that showed what that building looked like. So we brought some of those characteristics, but there is two buildings that we're gonna be making all look like one. But as far as sales figures, I just wanted to throw that out there. But as far as sales figures, we're, we're anticipating our numbers to fall in that range for our first year pandemic.
And that, as it relates to, as it relates to additional traffic, staff does anticipate with the projected opening of the rivalry this year, I'm sorry, twenty twenty one, potentially this applicant, this would have a significant impact on attracting additional traffic visitors to downtown Antioch. We think it would have the same type of impact on main street that Love and Nubbin has had on Lake Street. As you know, the traffic and then a number of visitors along Lake Street has picked up dramatically because of the villagers' investment in Love and Nubbin. We believe with the rivalry and this new anchor that it would have a significant impact on additional restaurant traffic in downtown.
Thank you, Michael and Chris for the, the information there. Joy, I just got one question on those, with those estimated numbers, how does that translate into revenue for the village?
Your speaker's off.
Muted.
Joy, your speaker.
Sorry about that. This is the first time I'm hearing the numbers, but I'm thinking just off a very rough calculation, maybe about four, four thousand dollars in sales tax a year.
That's forty. If he does two million in revenue, let's say for round numbers, we get one percent in sales tax, one percent toward the business district.
Well, the, the state gets seven percent and we get one percent of the seven percent.
Right, one percent of the seven percent?
Yeah, plus the, then the one percent of, of the eight percent. So about thirty-two hundred or so, but I'll have to, I'll get some more information from Chris and, and be able to give you a, a more definitive answer.
Anything else trustee Pierce at this time?
Not right now, no.
Trustee Masick?
It's more of a compliment for Chris taking the risk for Antioch. So I give you, I give you compliments to come to Antioch. We put the facade program at to attract businesses for you being here long term. That's, you know, that sales tax and, and, and we put it out there and you found it. You made the attraction that you want to place it. And, and I can speak for the restaurants I've talked to that make this a destination instead of going to Gurnee, instead of going to, no offense to where your, your place is, the Pleasant Prairie, home of Antioch.
Nothing wrong with that, nothing wrong with that, sir.
Yeah, I, I, and, and I will compliment you on your third lake. There's never been a complaint of the food. Everybody loves the food. So out there on our website, it's out there to attract folks like you. I just hope you're not, you know, you're gonna be able to see your wife and family.
Don't tell her that.
It's, it's the heart, restaurant works the hardest job, but I know other restaurants look for, hey, they may each eat, eat at your place on Tuesday, Thursday in, in, in other places. So it's, downtown will be a destination place. So I commend what you're accomplishing, you're putting, you're putting your own hard money into it. And it's not looking for, it were a partner, you're looking for, it was on the website and you found it. And, and I'm, I'm backing what you're doing. And I hope maybe get Roy DeSoto and Johnny Gage out here for a signing. That would be the best thing from the original emergency fifty one.
I'm glad that somebody knows what that means.
Oh, I, you know, I gotta tell you, I, I, I got it on, it's on Cozy TV. I record two episodes per day, so I still watch the show.
That's awesome.
Being a ten-year rescue squad member, former member.
Your service.
So, so I still watch it, so I think this is gonna be a great new look to the downtown area, so I commend you.
Thank you. I just want to add one thing to what you said and also back to what trustee Pierce said. Not, not only from a factor of as far as revenue generating back to the, to the village, because obviously I understand that aspect of it too, but I also wanted to kind of touch base on a couple, two other things. Is that one thing that we do at our current restaurant, barbecue productions, is that we sell bottles of barbecue sauce and every bottle of barbecue sauce we sell, we donate a quarter back to law enforcement that have fallen in the line of duty and also to first responders. So to this present day, just in our local community at Third Lake, to date, we've given away over a hundred thousand dollars back in the community from our profits. And I'm proud of that, you know, that's some of the stuff that, you know, not a lot of restaurants do or, you know, they do give some, whatever. But we always try to make sure that we give some of our profits back to the community that we're in. So not only from an aspect of the village, and I understand all that as well, but also from a community. So not only from an aspect of the village, and I understand all that as well, but also from a community standpoint is. We want to be in the community, but we also want to make sure that, you know, I also believe in a simple motto of if the community takes care of us, we'll take care of the community. Um and it takes community to make a community survive. Um so that's one huge aspect of it too, and then also too, um in one section and one corner of the um. Of the restaurant in the back corner, kind of where David's office is now, there we there would be a small little gaming area too that would have some gaming machines in it. So obviously, there'd be some additional revenues as well from that um that can come at a later time as well, so um just want to touch base on that.
Well, one last comment that I'll that I'll let it move on is. When a restaurant comes in, it becomes a landmark for other folks to come in and then they try other restaurants. So just, you know, one shouldn't be held to the one standard. So they do come in when one restaurant and other restaurants are here, you're gonna have the rivalry, it becomes a conglomerate of restaurants. So one shouldn't be hold the one standard, it's gonna be a partnership with everybody. So the the revenue back becomes everybody's back, so that's the whole point. Everybody's got everybody's back in the restaurant business.
Thank you trustee Mason. Uh trustee Yost?
I don't have any questions, your honor. I, you know, I think it's a great idea, it's very exciting, I like the concept, but I don't have any questions at this.
Okay, thank you. Trustee.
Uh I don't really have any questions. I'm continue to be excited about this. I was excited. When David called me and said you were interested in looking at this space and I was able to connect you to Mike. Um it looks like we'll get a decent payback on the investment and I concur with the other comments that were made. Regarding helping to revitalize downtown, so thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Okay. Okay trustee Paulus?
A couple of questions. One, um Jim, are there any other grant applicants uh that are out there for this year? Um that would be seeking any of this money or or are we looking into the following year's budget?
So I I I think you may see one more grant application come for yet another restaurant uh that's being contemplated. I I don't think that money would end up being paid out, because these are reimbursement grants. Um until probably the next budget year, I just can't see it happening that fast, just knowing what I know about how long these things take, so. I would anticipate yeah, another another grant application showing up possibly the next month or two. Um but we'll probably be into the next budget year before that would show up or or before we'd have to reimburse.
Okay, um then where are we with um revenues and expenditures right now? I thought we said the sales tax was was doing well even with the virus and our expenditures obviously are down because there's things we haven't been able to do, so. We're actually in a decent position, correct?
We are. Um we anticipated um lower than expected uh revenue, uh sales tax revenues. Um they beat our projections. I think Joy can go into a little more detail, but. We we have not experienced um the dip in uh sales tax that we had anticipated months ago. Um we've been kind of flat uh as far as sales tax goes and we've we our expenditures have been lower. The last number I saw was about six and a half percent on salaries um based on attrition and some things that we didn't do, so. Um I think Joy can expand a little bit further on where we are, um but we are doing better than expected. It's it's in revenues and better than expected in expenditures. So there is headroom, is what I guess it all amounts to. When we look at impact to the general fund, um we can we can afford to do this and and probably not go over budget total, but Joy, you go ahead.
Yes, right, so I projected out through the end of the the year. Um of course, you know, the projection in a second wave of COVID is uh is just as difficult as the first one was. Uh I'm projecting that our revenues are going to be about one point two percent higher than we had than expenses. And the expenses were down by projected through at April by five percent. And that is as a result of Jim just explained, a couple of people retired, we didn't replace those positions. Some people, uh we had one person who actually resigned and again, that position was replaced with an internal candidate. So I am projecting very cautiously at this time about maybe a six hundred dollar, six hundred thousand. Dollar difference between um revenue and expenses. I also did the same thing with the East Business District and the Central Business District. And um I'm projecting at April. Of twenty one, about eight hundred thousand and um the business tax, this. Business district tax in the east and of course, the central, which has now only had about two months of revenue. Um I'm expecting about four hundred thousand.
So you're looking at a million two two, right, Joy?
Yeah, the it thereabouts with the two of them.
Okay, and uh my question, I mean, just to interject here. The one point two million dollars is for one year?
Yes, that's that's right.
Okay, so there's another item on our agenda that we're gonna be talking about business district tax. So obviously, uh we talked about the eighty thousand dollars that was left over in this fund that was gonna. Possibly go toward the um grant program that we're talking about. But I had you do this exercise as far as re reevaluate the budget and shift some things around so we can at least attempt to. Bring this type of uh attraction into the village, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh anything else trustee Paulus?
I just had one other question. This is a large sum of money and when we did the incentive grants for the L house and for um Love and Oven. There's a payback mechanism in case things didn't work out, and I know a lot of the other beside grant things are. Are smaller amounts, but because this is such a large month, we have any kind of a mechanism in this uh agreement that if we do this that uh. You know, things don't work out, there's any kind of a reimbursement?
Yes, it's it's part of the package.
Yes, it's in it's in development. There is uh trustee Paulus, there is a development agreement uh in your packet. You'll see, I believe it's the last page, uh there is a payback provision, which is consistent with what we did. Uh with both the rivalry and uh Love and Oven, so it's it's the same type of approach.
All right, that was my only questions.
Okay, thank you. And trustee Johnson?
I don't have any questions. I'm really excited about them coming. I think this is a great idea.
All right, uh anything else? Uh obviously, um it looks like uh Chris is looking to get started here fairly quickly. Um obviously, um this is a a board decision. And if the board uh likes what they see here, I would uh probably entertain a. Motion if they if they feel like making that motion tonight.
Oh, and to make the motion, what do you need the motion that we give, we we authorize the money?
Correct.
Without the resolution, yes.
Without the resolution, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Hey, trustee Mason, uh Mason made the motion for the resolution, seconded by trustee Pierce, seconded that uh resolution. If the, any further questions trustee Pierce?
No further questions, your honor. I'm excited for this and I wish them the best of luck and I can't wait.
Okay, trustee Mason, any further questions?
No questions, just wish them luck.
Okay, and trustee Yost, any further questions?
None, your honor.
Uh trustee uh Dominique?
None, your honor.
And then trustee Paulus? And trustee Johnson?
No, your honor.
Okay, that being said, I'd uh have the clerk take a roll, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Yost?
No.
Dominique?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Hi.
Okay, five are voting yes. One is voting no, the motion's carried. Okay, item number. Ten would be number six. This just dovetails right into the uh uh small business grant program that's consideration of a resolution approving the village small business grant program. Resolution twenty dash XX.
What item six?
Michael, I know that's been something that the Economic Development Commission's been working on for a few weeks here. And obviously, uh having a funding mechanism and we can get Joy involved with that, because obviously. Um she did get some funding this this past week that would be used for this, so. We didn't have it when we were talking about it, but we're excited that we did get some funding to so we can uh. Put this toward that and I can maybe have Joy or Jim uh reiterate the. Uh a figure that we we that we talked about as far as, you know, making sure that. The majority of these small businesses that need it will get funded through this grant program, so that being said, Michael.
Yes, thank you. Um this matter is coming back for um village board consideration. As we recall at the last call meeting, we did have an extensive discussion of how we could assist uh the small business community uh during these challenging times. Um so based on the village board input, uh staff did work with our economic development task force. Over the past months to refine the program, uh you have uh within your packet a uh proposed and small business uh guidelines. Uh which we refined. Um Jim Kenny from State Bank uh Wintrust was very helpful. Along with the task force, provided a lot of really good input to kind of narrow the program. Uh I'm not gonna spend a lot of time regurgitating or re reiterating, but the the bottom line is the program would be eligible for. Independently small businesses, uh which are independently owned with a revenue of less than a half a million dollars. Uh twenty five uh employees or less, um that would be the general threshold. Um there would be a generally. Uh businesses which have received PPP would qualify, um PPP loans would qualify. Um we've also provided a criteria on the proposal would be um a maximum of five thousand dollars, so it would be a maximum grant of five thousand dollars. Um the there would be the prerogative to approve loans, which be less than five thousand dollars, not every loan. Would have to be five thousand dollars. There would be a fair amount of detail uh as part of the applications that that would have to be submitted for staff's analysis. We are proposing that um a um small business um. Uh committee of three individuals, including the finance director. Uh and two members of the economic task force, including Mr. Kenny. Um be appointed to review these applications in January. So the o- the opening of these applications would start in January. And they would end our analysis, a review would end in the end of January. We would hope to bring a list of of those businesses which would qualify under the program to the village board in February. So sometime in February, theoretically, these loans could be um distributed to the small businesses uh which need them. So this is a proposal that staffs outline. There is a specific criteria for the small business grant uh committee to review. Uh with some general uh criteria questions, so with that, I'll conclude my staff report and be more than happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Okay, trustee Pierce?
Well, I I'm really excited to see this. I know our businesses are hurting right now and everything we can do to help them helps and I appreciate the economic. Committee working on this and uh staff working on this. I know several of us board members asked for this, so I do appreciate that. My, I got one concern about this program. Some of these businesses may be providing information to the village that uh. Maybe proprietary or may not may not need to be shared. Is there any safety of their data if they supply it to us or? Is there any expectation of privacy, Mr. Long? My my question.
There is an exemption in the in the Freedom of Information Act that allows. Uh labeled proprietary information to be kept on public purview.
Okay, yep, good, because I want to protect our businesses too as long and while we're helping them. And and we we just helped the business come to Antioch tonight. And we're helping our local businesses that are currently existing here with this plan and program. Um I I'm hoping we can still come up with some ways to help alleviate the. The pain some of our residents are feeling, and I'm not sure that's a discussion another night, but I I'd like to keep that on the radar. And that's all I have.
Add to that, though, the one point would be good that. If a business that had that kind of information, it would be really helpful to everybody involved if they would flag it ahead of time, so we know what we're dealing with and we can separate it out.
Hey, trustee Mason, any questions?
Yeah, there's this, there's this one on the summary and background where we limit. Restaurants, retail shops, coffee shops, salons and spas. Now, we're doing this, is this the idea that it's gonna be some type of payback with retail or? Sales tax, or we're just gonna give it to a salon that doesn't, you know, sell shampoo, doesn't give any sales tax money back? To put in there a small term that they're eligible if they're paying sales tax? Or that part just doesn't, it doesn't make sense that we're gonna give free money out when they don't contribute anything but. Money possibly just to the landlord or they're paying property tax?
No, that's that's a fair question. Um and if you recall, originally, um when we proposed this program, we did not include. Any services and that included hair salons and nail salons, etc. Uh when we took it back for further discussion and further consideration by the task force. Their reasoning and their analysis was that they believe um that obviously some of these services like hair salons and. Us uh businesses and spas have been dramatically impacted uh by COVID nineteen. And because of that, it's more of a need basis because they've been so impacted because of the governor's restrictions. So um they their analysis wasn't, it was not based on, you know, what the sales tax gen was generated. It was more based on a needs basis, so that's why we did include on a limited basis uh these these limited services. So I I'm hoping that was a that was addition by the task force.
Okay, what? And and I know it's not in the business district, but you got a person that you got a a. An eye doctor, which I'm sure they they do sales tax on eyewear. It when you limit it to this and they're not in the and they're not in this program and they're and but they're not in the business district, they get it. But it kind of limits when you when you make it specific to only this. And not the retail tax, you might be leaving one person out that you didn't think of.
Well, again, we the 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 I think that's the task in the original address of the board. Um was there was a general consensus that uh professional services like doctors, lawyers. Um um financial consultants would not be included in this program. To do, I think some of them have been impacted, obviously they have been. To had they been impacted in the same extent that restaurants have been, I don't think they have been. Um so that's that's, we had to draw a line somewhere because there is.
No, I I I get what you're saying, but you're not hearing what I'm saying, that there's there's. Businesses out there that capture sales tax money. And I'm I'm fearing that they're they're not gonna be on this list. I just gave you one example of a doctor's office. That 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 when when you go buy a pair of eyeglasses are six hundred dollars. And I'm sure there's sales tax on that. And that's just one example, and I'm just I'm just fearful we're leaving someone out of the ballgame. Gonna be sit, they're gonna be placed on the bench.
Right. Oh, you're right. There there are, there's gonna be businesses that generate some sales tax that are not included in this program. That you're absolutely correct.
I would think you should put, I I I think that word, if you generate sales tax and you're in the.
If if the board so desires, we can modify the program to include that, if that's the board's prerogative. Um I would just be looking for village board direction.
Okay, we'll keep going. Uh trustee Yost?
I have no questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee uh Dominique?
Um I don't have any questions. I just want to kind of tag on to what Michael said about the rationale for these businesses. The the other part of that discussion was not only have they been hit by the um. Virus, but uh and the restrictions, I should say, but also that some of these entities, businesses. Um this would be a way for them to keep their doors open and therefore keep people employed. And they then pay into the community, so that was just another reason for it. That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Trustee Paulus?
I have no questions, your honor.
And trustee Johnson?
Um no questions, I guess I just have a a a.
No questions. I guess I just have a comment again. I, I, our businesses are vital to our community, and I know there's a ton of struggling businesses. But a few things is, once again, I might, I want to echo what trustee Pierce said is the fact about businesses being reluctant to, you know, divulge their financial information. And I know, you know, we, we're going to have an agreement where it's got to be confidential and so forth. I know people are going to be hesitant. On the second thing is kind of along the lines of what trustee Maisick said, we're going to have so many businesses come at us and say, what about us? And, you know, like, like Michael Garry said, we have to draw a line somewhere. The problem is we wouldn't be drawing the line. And we're going to be alienating a lot of other people. And again, I, you know, I think it's wonderful. We're going to help those businesses that are in need. And I'm just going to go back into what I said in the last meeting. Trustee Pierce mentioned earlier, you know, something about the residents. I just think that the better program again is if, you know, any resident shops within Antioch and, you know, turning those receipts, they could go ahead and get a credit of some sort to go back and shop back into the businesses. That helps all the businesses, all the businesses in Antioch are eligible, all the residents are eligible. So we cover every single business, we cover every single resident, and we're not alienating nobody. So again, I think this is a great program, but I do think we are opening ourselves to some criticism on the people that are going, the businesses that are going to be left out.
The basics got his hand waving.
Yeah, you know, you get on the trustee, you know, I, I was thinking what trustee Johnson said. And there's companies out there that'll do a third-party type credit card, you know, discounted card that that can be used in Antioch for businesses. So that could be done through a third-party card shopping in Antioch. So, so you swipe this card and it's funded. Our cards, card companies out there that'll manage the funding. So they'll fund it. We're, we're, we, we fund that card. And they get money off it with the card. So the trustee Johnson, I, 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 I'm kind of agreeing with that. And then you're limited through, through that card service? And then we're not discriminating businesses? It's done through that card on sales tax? Just.
I see Scott Pierce is also waving his hand. You got your speaker off, Scott?
I, I'm, I'm unmuted now. Um, I, I think trustee Maisick and trustee Johnson may have some valid points. What concerns me right now is we're, what, nine months into this? It's December. They're talking this may, what we're talking about tonight may be effective in February or so, once all the paperwork started through and stuff. And, and I know one of the criticisms of the board is we tend to engineer everything to death. And by the time we get through engineering it and talking about it, it's too late and the the village has already sunk because we've spent all our time trying to figure out how to make the village float better. Instead of actually floating the village, I'd like to propose that we approve this thing tonight and to get it started. And then have a phase two that we discuss over the next month or two to address trustee Johnson and trustee Maisick's concerns. And so that we keep moving forward and keep helping our businesses. We can talk about this forever and come up with ways to fix it. But I, I think, I think they have valid points and we should come up with a plan for that. But we could start moving forward tonight by approving this and, and agreeing that we'll work on the rest of that and continue discussing it.
Your Honor.
I guess trustee Dominik.
Yeah, I would concur with all of my colleagues, and I agree with trustee Pierce. Let's move forward on this. I'm happy to make the motion to approve this resolution. And, and once we get this going, then we can certainly look at other opportunities to help others in the community, but I think we should go forward. So when you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to make it.
Okay, thank you. My comment is the Village of Antioch is not alone in this crisis. I think every small town USA in this country is in the same boat. We're actually looking to our neighbor, neighboring communities that have already started these programs or in the process of starting these programs. Jim and I talked about this probably months ago. And most villages are not set up in the, in this type of an environment where they have process, processes where, you know, we have this mechanism to fund these things. This is all new to most communities, and I think we're the type of community that's just trying to invest in what's here. We work hard to bring these businesses here, and these businesses are struggling. And I think we need to do everything in our power to at least assist where we can. It's not easy. And, and, and again, I think we have to do our part, and we do have the funding mechanism. I think we've done an excellent job. This board has done an excellent job with our great finance department, the administration, to go into this year very conservative, knowing that we anticipated a downturn in, in the economy. Surprisingly, this economy in our community surprises that people rallied together, supported our small businesses going through the drive, drive-throughs, the grocery stores, the, you know, the the Menards of the Worlds, Walmarts, Jewel, Piggly Wiggly, all these independent stores. I think we have lived in a unique community where people do care. So I think the, the community cares that we keep our businesses in, in a position where we want to try to save those. Again, we just, the board just approved a restaurant. To me, that's thinking I had to, to have that as a restaurant that is here when these businesses are back, when things are back to normal. So that's going to complement the businesses that are here. So I love Jerry Johnson's idea because whenever you can reinvest in the community through either a credit card or some kind of a receipt program, again, that would be another program that we can look at. So that being said, I would entertain, entertain a motion. First of all, Jim had a question, our administrator, then I'll ask for a motion.
So the, what's in the packet has a maximum of $150,000. And I was wondering, I, I think there will be strong interest in this. I think you could easily get to $150,000. And then there would be those that would not, you know, wouldn't get it. Knowing that we did get, I believe it was a CARES grant from the county with a significantly higher amount that I understand can be distributed. Joy, can you confirm we can distribute some of the CARES money allocated to the village back to businesses for relief? She's indicating yes.
Speaker Joy.
For, I'm sorry, from losses incurred from closures.
Right. So that's who we're targeting really is those who are affected, you know, not necessarily those that produce sales tax, but more those that were affected by closure is really who we're targeting. Those are the most impacted. And I was wondering what the board's tolerance would be for possibly a higher amount.
I originally, I originally asked the administrator and Joy if we could at least bring it to at least $250,000 to $300,000 as part of the money we got from the CARES Act to at least know we have enough funded so we can at least cover most of our, our small businesses that are qualifying.
How much money did we get from the CARES Act?
$655,000. So you could do a larger amount and not impact general funding.
And do we, we have access to those funds as well for some of our costs that we incurred?
Well, that's where some of the half of the other part's going to go toward public safety.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim, for that. Thank you, Joy, for applying for that grant, keeping on top of all those grants that are out. Hopefully, there's a few other ones that come through. So again, excellent work on staff's part. That being said, I would entertain a motion since we do have a better funding source for this going forward.
Make the motion.
Make the motion. I'll make the motion. Did Jim, before we vote on it though, did you get the answer to your question? Are people comfortable going up to $250,000 using that money? I'm assuming that's okay if we've got that money.
Could be part of a motion if you're going to make that one.
I'd like to stick with what we've got right now scheduled and then get a breakdown, what exactly we've received, what we have to spend for the village cost, and then what we could spend for increasing this up for the things and have our phase two. So that we're, that we're not just saying, okay, increase the money. Because we were just told just now, oh, there's $600,000 COVID money we just received. Maybe we can come up with, you know, a phase two that has better coupons, as trustee Johnson says, and covers professionals like trustee Maisick says, and, and helps the village and helps our residents. But I think, like we said, this is an initial plan, and we could, we could come up with a secondary plan that, that fully explains to us and our residents what we're spending the COVID money on. Instead of just saying, okay, yeah, $250,000 sounds good tonight, but $300,000 sounds good tomorrow. I, I think we need a better description and better plan. But I'm comfortable seconding the motion as it is for the, the current plan before us to get it started.
Okay, that resolution was obviously a resolution we passed back a couple meetings ago. If you don't recall, we had a motion that was from the county, I believe. Right, Joy? It was a, or Jim? We had this on our docket, and that was part of that motion, correct?
Yes.
So my motion is to approve this resolution supported by this, these documents as written.
Great. There were a motion by trustee Dominik. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
It's seconded by trustee Pierce. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll ask the clerk to take role, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Hi.
Okay, that's six voting yes. This motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda, that would be going back to the originally item five. A consideration of a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures, including the cost of redevelopment plan and project in connection with the Village Route 83 redevelopment project area, two, the cost of the business district plan and protect in connection with the Village East project area, business district, and three, the cost of business district plan and project in connection with the Village Central Business District, namely, the cost of land acquisition and the construction of public works and improvements being municipal public building, public roadway, water, sanitary sewer, storm, sewer sidewalk parking, parking, recreation, flood mitigation and drainage, and utility improvements, together with related app, appertnesses, all electrical, professional, financial, bond, register, legal, mechanical, and other services necessary, useful or advisable to such acquisition and development and incidental, incidental to set improvements to pay bond discount, bond interest, financing, and administrative expenses to be reimbursed for the proceeds of an obligation to be issued by the Village of Antioch Lake County, Illinois Resolution 20-58. A lot said there, and I, we do have our Daryl Davidson and Stefan Roberts here tonight to go over those issues. Jim wants to start us off with this whole project. I'll let Jim take the floor.
So, thank you, Your Honor. That was certainly a mouthful. One of the longer agenda items I've ever seen on an agenda. But it, it really encompasses what would be a broad, broad brush stroke of what we intend to do with business district funds. As I explained in the committee, the whole meeting, that was in, I think, November 25th, we had discussed that this would be an initial resolution expressing intent. I, I do have Bond Counsel Daryl Davidson from Miller Canfield and Stefan Roberts, Financial Advisor from Bear. And they, they can go into more detail on the process. But in, in the meeting on the 25th, we presented a kind of a schedule and all the different steps required to issue an alternate revenue source bond. This kind of would be a kickoff step or a first step. And then, you know, what we're talking about doing is leveraging the revenues into, from the business district. And using that to provide capital for, you know, certainly some of the big ticket items. I'm going to highlight two of those, which would be the Pittman Property, excuse me, and Grim Road would be the other big ticket item project. You could potentially leverage these, these monies or these bonds in series. You necessarily wouldn't have to issue all of the bond at one time. Depending on the timing of, you know, when you need to use the funds, you know, it may make, make sense to do two issuances. However, I think we'll know more as we proceed a little farther in the planning for those projects. But, but really what this, this or, or this resolution does is is it allows us to recoup some of the money spent today, such as engineering costs. These are soft costs. You know, if we had engineering costs, studies, other things that we're going to do to, to plan and program these projects, we would be able to use bond proceeds that would be issued later, you know, later this year if the board chooses to proceed with this. And enable us to use bond proceeds to reimburse ourselves for costs that are realized now. I hope I didn't misstate that, but I would like, I had asked that Daryl and Stefan, please be on this meeting so they can maybe give you a little more context on what, what it means. But again, this is first step of many to get a municipal bond in place to fund some of these big ticket items and possibly other items that will be contemplated within the business districts. So why don't you take it away, Daryl, and see if you can give them a little more on what this means?
Thanks, Jim. Now, that introduction is exactly right. The, the part we haven't talked about yet is that this resolution is very much called for by federal tax regulations that don't allow municipalities to reach back too far in the past to reimburse themselves for capital expenditures for their projects. So depending on the, the program that the village wants to adopt and the sequencing of its expenses, if the village does go forward with an alternate bond and has preliminary expenses, whether it be land acquisition or soft costs or other bond-related expenses, having this resolution on hand early allows the village to reach back and reimburse its general fund or the business district funds for, for those expenditures. And so the, the tax code that we work with, you know, has requirements which are found in this resolution. For example, it, we have to say sort of the, the projects contemplated and the maximum amount of the bond issue. It does, this does not make the village spend 16-point-whatever million dollars. This is a, a preliminary resolution done for tax planning purposes so that the village does not have to worry about what are called reimbursement regulations moving forward. And, and I do regret absolutely that the title is so long. If I had known that it was going to be read out loud, word for word, I would have probably made it a little shorter tonight. But I'm a technical kind of person, and so we've put all the technicalities into this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, of course, that the, the board may have with respect.
Yeah, I would open that up to trustee Pierce. Your speaker.
I'm sorry. I thought that explanation was pretty good, so I'm good right now.
Okay, trustee Maisick.
Well, I've got a few concerns with, with this concept. We haven't got a breakdown, why 17 and not 100 million? We haven't got a breakdown, why seventeen and not a hundred million dollars? What's the cost to taxpayer? I mean, we haven't got a breakdown. This, you know, I was a no vote on the Pittman property. This is almost, we came up with this figure, seventeen million dollars in bond money, and I haven't seen a breakdown of where we come up with this money per project. You know, we 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 said at a prior meeting and argued about performance bond at an earlier meeting, and now we're talking seventeen million dollars, which entails attorney's costs, bond, bond fee costs. And I understand that, you know, there's an election coming up, you know, we we move forward with this. What's the cost for months? There could be, there could be new people sitting here. It could be the same people. We don't know. But we move forward, and it's kind of irresponsible to go out and spend in four months. There's, there's a lot of people running. In four months, there could be new thoughts, thought processes of trustees and maybe, maybe, you know, hopefully not, but a new, new, new mayor, but I don't know what the costs are. They're not broken down in our resolution, in under packet, you know, exact attorney cost, exact what's this going to cost the taxpayers? The way it sits right now, it just doesn't make sense. And it it's not in writing. It's not how much money is going to the Pittman property? How much is going for infrastructure on Grim Road? It's almost like we're we're getting a bond for a blank check.
It's an excellent question, trustee Mason. Know that this resolution sets a maximum amount, consider it a do not exceed. If I had those breakdowns, I would provide them to you, but the fact is that we're at very preliminary stages. You know, the engineering is progressing on Grim Road, but we don't have a final number, and the planning of the Pittman property is really just beginning. We, we, we have a very conceptual number. So I use best available information.
I'm going to use my favorite word, all due respect. We've gotten zero numbers, and to proceed with a seventeen million dollar bond with zero numbers in seventeen million dollars to the taxpayer, I I can't give fiduciary responsibility with no preliminary numbers that I've seen.
Yeah, and I I I understand your question. Just know that this was a a maximum number. You, this is not obligating you to issue seventeen million dollars. If it comes back, that the engineering, you know, estimates on Grim Road are eight million, and, you know, the 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 property at Pittman is only going to be four million or five million or something like that. That number would get reduced, so you're not, you don't have to proceed with that number. That's, I only, you know, the best estimate I have right now is about ten million bucks for for Grim, and there was one, one estimate for about seven million for Pittman. So this enables you to cover those. I- i- if if that's what the village board ultimately agreed to, you could go up and and do that, but this does not obligate you to go to that amount. You could all, if if projects ended up being five million less, you'd issue bonds at five million less.
Okay, you're not understanding what I'm saying. Let's just, let's just, I'm just going to pick on Pittman since I was a no vote on Pittman. When you say seven million dollars on Pittman, what the heck are we going to put there to Taj Mahal? So you're talking seven million dollars for Pittman, which I don't even know what would go there for seven million dollars if we're going to put gold bricks out there. I don't see moving forward with seven million dollars. This is not, this just doesn't make sense.
You would, you would not be moving forward with seven million dollars.
Okay. Two to my question. We've got attorney fees with this, Jim. We've got bond fees with this. We're going to pay this gentleman, Mr. Davidson, we're going to pay him fees for putting this together, to write this, and we don't even know, when you talk seven million dollars for Pittman, we don't even know what what the plan is for Pittman. And what I'm worried about.
Absolutely correct.
And 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 what I'm worried about, you said three hundred thousand for cleanup. All of a sudden, money gets commingled. So I, I, I could not support this without having some preliminary idea, what the heck do you want to to build on Pittman property? What's the plan for Pittman property? I get it. I think this is so premature that to put this on, that that we're going to, we're going to put to the taxpayer seventeen million dollars that they've got to pay off.
No, you're not doing that with this resolution. It does not operate that way. This simply, if if you wanted to spend seven on on Pittman, like, and you were presented a concept that came out to somewhere.
Jim, I under, I understand the concept, but once you start the process, and we said, oh, we're not going to do it, and Mr. Davidson can say yes or no to this, if we said, no, we're not going to do it, we may be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in attorney fees and bond costs.
No, the attorneys, attorneys get paid out of the closing costs, whatever final amount that, and Daryl can certainly speak up, but these are usually percentage deals, so he'll get a cut of the closing costs. And that that amount, like I said, once, once there is village board approval of, but let's say the village board only approves a two million dollar expenditure on the Pittman property after you've, you know, done visioning and gone through the process to determine what should be there. You're not obligated to spend seven, but let's say, if the board wanted to spend seven, now you have to go back and and do some different things. So we're only setting a do not exceed. You're not obligating us to go to that height, that we're not obligating anybody to go to that number. If in the final analysis, the board author authorized a much lower number, you know, that's what you go by, and that's what people get paid by.
And I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. But at the same token, I haven't seen anything, any plan, any, nothing on both properties of what what's going to happen. I haven't seen the road or what businesses are going to fund the road. I haven't seen any plans to justify seven, even ten million dollars.
Those plans are.
If I, if I could interject, I I think that also you need to be aware that there will be another set of proceedings before the village even begins the bond finance process. There, there needs, this is, the type of bond issue being anticipated is is called an alternate bond, and it uses revenues from the business districts or from the TIF area. And it, there will be a petition period and a petition process as the next set of proceedings for the village that will then authorize a maximum amount of bonds. This resolution is purely for tax purposes, federal tax purposes, in case and in the anticipation that the village will have a tax-exempt bond issue. And so.
You're missing my point. I don't have a cost structure in my packet, how much this.
Yes, I, 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 I hear you. I just, I just wanted you to be informed.
So, so what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but nobody's hearing what I'm saying. I'm not, you know, to put your work together and to do what you're doing, I don't have what this costs, so I'm not entitled for a blank check.
Hey, could I interject here, please, as mayor? We're not getting anywhere on this, Ed, because all we're doing is going around and around and around, so obviously, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, but it seems like we're, we're just going down, just, we're not getting to the, you know, so we get your question, and I'm not trying to cut you off on that. It's just like.
That's fine, take someone else.
We're just trying to, we're just trying to get forward on this, and I just want to comment on, on, on your comment to me about the, the board members, you know, we're all elected officials to act, and as of today, we can't think about wait until the future because we're all elected to think today and tomorrow, and obviously, if we, we thought that way, we'd, we'd all wait till, till May to make another decision. So I think we need to think for the future a little bit and plan for the future, and I think this is just getting us set up to look at a way to fund these many, many projects that have been on the docket, and Pittman being one of them, Grim Road being another one, and obviously, having a funding mechanism for it. I think this is just about planning. It's not about spending. So I think we just need to at least listen to everybody else and hopefully all understand it, so. Trustee Yost, any comments?
I have no, no questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee Dominiac, please.
I have no questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee Paulus?
Just one comment. One of the, you know, what Daryl was talking about, the alternate revenue bonds, so these would be, these would, this money would come out of the business district tax, and those business district funds can only be used for certain things like this. It's not, we're not taking additional taxpayer money, you know, unless there was something would would happen with the sales, the additional sales tax. But that additional sales tax is specifically for this kind of thing. It can't be intermingled with the general fund monies. So this isn't, this isn't going to be an additional tax to the taxpayers. It's already, it's money that's already being collected and would be paid out over a number of years as, as an alternate revenue bond, and we need to get the the process started. This is typically how these, these things work. So we, we need to start it, and we need to move forward, and I understand what trustee Mason's concerns are. But at this point, we don't have those numbers, and that's, and usually you don't at this point. But again, the funding comes from money we're collecting for, for the additional sales tax that we voted on, and it has to be specifically used for items like this, so just a little clarification there.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Johnson? Your speaker's off?
Sorry about that. Yeah, no, it was well explained. I don't have any questions.
Okay. So, going back to the question, the question is, this is just phase one, beginning phase one of a process to get a bond process rolling, correct, Daryl?
That's right.
So before this board could spend a dime or even consider it, it's, it's got multiple phases, correct? Where we will bring it back to the board, and hopefully by the time it gets back, we'll be able to answer a lot of those questions that trustee Mason might have and other board members, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
Your honor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can, can I just?
Yes, you can.
Follow, follow up here. Along with what trustee Paulus was saying, we've been working on this issue. This is not phase one. This is not phase zero. We, we worked on the business district funds for several years, putting them in place, doing a lot of work to get the business district in place so that we could generate funds. And and following Mr., so this would be like the next step in the process. And following Mr. Davidson's explanation, if I was a homeowner, I kind of maybe think of this as my loan preapproval. I went to the bank, did the paperwork for a loan preapproval, and then went out and started shopping for what I could afford based upon what the bank and the, the funds told me I could afford. And then we would come back, and me and my wife would have a big discussion about what type of house I'm going to buy. And she would, she would end up telling me how much I'm going to buy, and I think my, the taxpayers would probably tell us the same thing, how much we're going to buy and what they want. But we have to get the paperwork in place first before we can have that discussion.
Yes, this is a, this is a technical. It's done, this is technically done for the convenience of the village, so that when the tax analysis of the bond issue comes through, how many months from now that is in twenty twenty-one, that this gives us our basis for making sure that the village can reimburse itself from the bond proceeds for things that you authorize in the future to be spent.
Okay, thank you. So Jim, what are you looking for tonight? Are we looking for?
Motion to approve the resolution as written.
Okay. Okay, you do have a motion by trustee Dominiac. Do I hear a second from anybody?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, trustee Paulus. Okay, we'll have the clerk take the role, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
No.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Your speaker's off to, I mean, Jerry, speaker?
Sorry about that. Yeah, aye.
Okay, so we have five of the board members voting in favor of the resolution. We have one trustee voting no. The motion's carried. Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda. Consideration of a resolution authorized in the village administrative enter into an agreement by Arthur J. Gallagher, Risk Management Services, Inc., to provide property casualty liability, workman's compensation and related insurance is not to include employee health insurance in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, resolution number twenty dash fifty-nine. So Jim, you want to?
Yeah, as we customarily do, your honor, and board members. This is the time of year we need to renew our property casualty, casualty workman's comp insurance. We have a renewal premium that represents approximately one point five percent increase over last year. We, we did have good experience this year, but not, certainly not with, with what's has happened with the pandemic, but with our history as far as losses. So that, that largely dictates the premium. We do have Ethan from Gallagher on the meeting tonight, in case there are questions, but this is a no, this is the, almost the identical, if not the identical policy you have in place for last year or currently with what we consider to be a very good renewal premium price. And again, we do have Ethan to answer any questions that the board may have. We do have to act on this because we have to bind insurance as of Jan. one. So we have to act on this
today.
Either tonight, or you'd have to call a special meeting to maintain insurance coverages.
Okay. The board, would you like to hear anything from Ethan, or if you have any questions of him? If not, I'll entertain a motion to get this on the floor in a second, if we can get it on the floor.
I'll make a motion, put it on the floor.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Yeah, that's second by trustee Yost. Any questions, trustee Pierce, at the present time?
No, I'd like to hear from Ethan, especially since I only got two weeks left on this deal to, to, to vote on it, and I would have liked to have been working on this sooner. So I'd like to hear from Ethan and then our resident insurance expert.
Good evening, trustee, mayor. Thank you for having me this evening, hoping everyone is doing well, given the times. As Jim stated, this is the time of the year for renewal. We met with staff a couple of weeks ago, and this was the soonest meeting after that. Just a, a little ten thousand foot view of what's going on in the insurance world right now, especially for municipalities. The, the property market is shrinking as the appetite is shrinking. Insurance carriers have seen severe losses across the Midwest, whether that's wind, hail, lightning, derachos, wind, you name it. They've been getting hit pretty hard with property losses over the past few years. Additionally, part of this insurance covers your liability for your law enforcement. Well, the current law enforcement landscape, combined with the large losses that are being experienced by municipalities in the past year to eighteen months, has affected liability rates for, from insurance carriers, combined with civil unrest and, and activity going on throughout the state. It happens in larger cities, yes, but, you know, it's still a risk, and any law enforcement right now is, is kind of a red flag risk for, for insurance carriers. On the workers' compensation side, presumption act from Governor Pritzker that basically deems your work count carrier must cover police and fire if they get COVID at work and it's presumed, so that affected rates a little bit. Employee, employment practice claims, sweats, discrimination, sexual harassment, wrongful termination, those continue to rise. Employment, employment practice claims, sweats, discrimination, sexual harassment, wrongful termination, those continue to rise. And we look to just state which makes those claims a couple hundred thousand dollars instead of a couple thousand. Furthermore, you know, public entities and municipalities have become a stronger target for ransomware attacks and cyber hacks, mainly due because they don't have the strong network securities as other organizations. The, the insurance marketplace in general is the most volatile it's been in decades. And given the current state of the marketplace, most of our communities were seeing five to seven percent increases that were performing well. We were to negotiate with your current carrier. Again, you see the numbers below. Overall, it's a 1.7% increase. We were very, very extremely pleased with, with this result. It was a strong renewal. And again, as Jim alluded to, a lot of that is due to the performance and commitment to risk management from your department heads and village staff, keeping things in check. So we were happy with where we were able to negotiate in terms of marketing and going to different carriers. We recommend we do this about every three years unless we see it to be more advantageous to do so. So we did that this year, not on a full market, but what we did was we kind of snooped around a couple of other markets and, you know, had initial conversations to ensure that they could not beat current pricing or terms. That was the case. Your incumbent carrier Liberty Mutual is providing the same exact coverage and deductibles with a price that's by far the most competitive in the marketplace as it relates to the village. So we did check under the hood a little bit to make sure we did get the best that we could. And like I said, you know, 1.7% in this marketplace is extremely rare to find. Not mentioned in that 1.7% is a, the village is also receiving an $8,651 safety grant from your workers' compensation carrier, IPRF. This allows the village to spend this grant on anything they deem safety-related. That's a good, it's a good figure in terms of years passed from an amount of a safety grant. So your, your overall increase on a dollar-wise is about 6,500. And then you've got that $8,651 grant coming. And then the final figure to look at is our brokerage fee. Gallagher's compensated on a brokerage fee instead of commission. So we don't collect any commissions from any of your policies. So our brokerage fee this year has increased 3%, which is $1,010. With that, I'd like to open the floor kind of for any questions or if anyone would like a little more detail of anything insurance-related.
Trustee Pierce, does that answer your questions?
I'm good. Still waiting to hear from our expert.
Trustee Maisick?
You know, I didn't make the Zoom meeting, so I didn't see because it was a weird email. So I checked with my general counsel and I'm going to recuse myself from voting in comments.
Okay, trustee Yost, same?
I, I have no questions. You know, I took a look at this and obviously with my background, I do have some familiarity. I'm comfortable with the process and the, the increase, increase seems to me to be reasonable. So I have no questions.
Trustee Dominik?
I don't have any questions, your honor.
Thank you. And trustee Paulus?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, the only comment I have is a historical comment. I think the only one sitting on this board at the time was trustee Pierce. And I got to commend our staff, our employees. Just a short 10 years ago, our insurance was over $700,000 for risk insurance. So I think it's a phenomenal mark that this village over the last 10 years has worked this diligently and this hard for number one, safety. Number two, a better work environment. And I'm proud of the fact that the, the leadership in our community has saved the taxpayers almost half of what we used to spend in a, in an economic time when, when things were a lot different. So again, that shows, again, great staff leadership, great finance leadership and, and having the right insurance companies. Again, 10 years ago, we were with the risk management with IML and their, their premiums in 2010, 2011 were hovering toward a million dollars. And with everything being said, again, the taxpayers should be proud of everybody here that we are working diligently and we are looking out for the almighty dollars. And obviously that's what our job is as elected officials is to look at every, turn every rock under and look underneath it to, to actually make, make them proud of the fact that we are working toward a good goal. All I have to say for historical purposes. Anything else from the board? If, if not, they'll entertain a motion in a second unless it's, okay. So I have a motion in a second. Entertain a motion to take a roll for the clerk.
Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes?
No, no, I'm recusing.
He's recusing.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, five voting yes, ones that recuse themselves. Motion's carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Ethan. Okay. Next item. Consideration of a resolution authorized execution of an escrow agreement with the rivalry Ale House Resolution 20-60. We have Jim Donahoe, who rep, who one of, he is the owner of the Ale House or one of the owners of Ale House. I'll have him speak unless Jim wants to open it up. Jim, anybody? Michael?
Jim? I think this is, is just another step in the process, your honor, to get the Ale House on a, on a good footing when they finally open and allow them to kind of hit the, hit the ground running, so to say. So I don't know if Michael has anything more or Lori Remine has anything more on this. But I believe this item is, is going to allow them to proceed and sets them up for a liquor license in the appropriate timing so that, again, they can hit the ground running once they are able to get the certificate, certificate of occupancy and, and open the doors.
Okay. Any questions trustee Pierce?
Can you explain what exactly we're doing? I read in here, we're just accelerating, giving them their license so that they can do their gambling application. Is that exactly what we're doing or we're not giving them any more money or anything, right?
That might be helpful if I gave an overview, mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
The, under the ordinary, our ordinary processes, we have a provision in these, in the ordinance which was adopted on a liquor license, giving them the shirt, the security that they would receive it. And a liquor license would ordinarily be issued at the time they get a certificate of occupancy for the restaurant. That works, now this ordinance was written at a point in time, at a point in time where video gaming hadn't been approved yet. And we hadn't had this particular type of experience where the build-out was expensive and it took a long time to get up. But there's also another factor in this which says that the Illinois Gaming Board is taking longer and longer to review these processes. Originally, it was a couple of weeks or a month. Now it's up to as much as six weeks, eight weeks, in some instances, three months because of the COVID situation that we're dealing with. So in order for people to get their business and be fully operational at the time that they open the front doors, finish their soft, soft opening and ready for opening, they want to have everything available for their customers to come in and be interested in their products and everything they have to offer. So in order to do that, we have to find a way to back up so that you award the liquor license before they can actually use it for anything related to the liquor because the liquor license is a prerequisite to securing a gaming license. We've already said that they would be eligible for a gaming license. We've already said that they would be eligible for the license. So in order to make this work and because of the, the way liquor license revocation processes work, I established and wrote up this escrow agreement. Basically what we'll do is we'll give them the liquor license and allow them to use it for exactly one thing, which is this apply for the gaming license. And then they will secure it and have it available to them as soon as they have their occupancy permit. Then they can fill up their, fill up their stores with the district, from the distributors and start commencing sales as they open up their cracking their video games that should be at that point in time. This is something that is a business-friendly approach that I would recommend you make available to other people in the, in the future. This appears to be something that's going to be required in order to deal with some delays in the state of Illinois.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, attorney along. Trustee Pierce, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, trustee Maisick?
I recuse myself on this. I don't think I can unrecuse myself.
Okay, trustee Yost?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominik?
The only question that I have is I thought I read in here that they applied for a A license. Did I see that or? That you had previously requested an A license?
A whole restaurant license, yes.
Yeah, don't you want an A1 as well for outdoor?
Yeah, but they only need the A for the purpose of the, of the liquor license.
Okay, all right. So you'll, we'll get the other later.
This accomplishes everything you need to do. It'll somewhat lower cost.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Dominik and trustee Paulus?
No questions, your honor.
And trustee Johnson's probably going to recuse himself.
Yeah, I, I too had to recuse myself.
Okay. Alrighty, that being said, if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Also moved.
Okay, it's moved by trustee Paulus. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that's seconded by trustee Pierce. I'll have the clerk take the role, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick?
Present, recused.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Recuse myself.
Okay, have four yeses, two recusals. This motion's carried. Okay, consideration of an ordinance for Village of Aniac, Illinois, Special Service Area Number One, approving administrative report and special tax rule for levy year 2020 and abating special service.
You missed item number eight.
Eight, where am I going? Oh, I'm sorry. I take that back. I got marks on here. Okay, I'm going to go back to number eight. I'm sorry. Consideration of an ordinance deleting and adding a one Class C retail packet sales liquor license and one Class B and C tobacco license for MP Outlet LLC, DBA Discount Tobacco, to be located at 284 Main Street to reflect a change in corporate ownership and prorating fees. Ordinance number 20-12-43. We have Nick Patel is also, we don't see him, but he was asked to be here, but we, he's not actually on the call. So I'll entertain a motion in a second to get it on the floor and then maybe have Jim, Michael or explain the process as far as the change of ownership. Mike, you want to just speak on that behalf? I'm going to let the clerk talk on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Lori will take care of this one.
This is just a simple, the, the licenses aren't transferable. So this is just a simple change in ownership. Once a license is relinquished, it goes away. So the board needs to approve the addition of another license to go to the new corporate share, to the new corporate, corporate owner. The police department did do backgrounds on these individuals and, and did not see any red flags or issues with, with the applicants.
Okay, thank you. And part of his family, right? I mean, this, see a family is just totally different, different ownership, okay. All right, that's the explanation. Any questions trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee Maisick?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Yost?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee Dominik?
No questions, your honor.
And trustee Paulus?
The only question I have is do we have a motion on the floor?
We will, we'll get one in a second here.
No, no other questions.
Trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
I'll second.
Is that waived in the second reading?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, trustee Paulus made the motion, waived in the second reading, seconded by trustee Pierce to, to the same. I'll entertain a roll call.
Pierce?
Aye.
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, six voting yes. No, no, this motion's carried. Now I'm going to go to the consideration of an ordinance for Village of Aniac, Illinois, Special Service Area Number One, approving administrative report and special tax rules for levy year 2020 and abating special service area taxes, ordinance number 20-12-44. I'll entertain a motion in a second to waive the second reading.
So moved.
Okay, moved by trustee Paulus. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by trustee Johnson. Any questions trustee Pierce?
It looked like a very minor, minor, minor increase. So, and then we're abating, so I have no questions.
Okay, trustee Maisick?
Questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee Yost?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominik?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee Paulus?
No questions.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, clerk, take roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick? Maisick?
Yes, sorry.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Six voting yes. No, no, this motion's carried. Consideration of an ordinance for Village of Aniac, Illinois, Special Service Area Number Two, approving administrative report and special tax rules for levy year 2020 and abating special service area taxes, ordinance number 20-12-45. I'll entertain a motion, waived in the second reading for, for this area, number two.
I'll make the motion approving the ordinance for the service area two, abating the taxes and waive in second reading.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Pierce made the motion, seconded by trustee Paulus. Any further questions trustee Pierce?
No, your honor.
Okay, trustee Maisick, any question?
Question, your honor.
Yost?
None, your honor.
Trustee Dominik?
None, your honor.
And trustee Paulus?
No questions, your honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, roll call from the clerk.
Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, that's six voting yes. No, no, this motion's carried. Okay, moving on. Item number 13, we, we aren't ready for that, for the collective bargaining. They did the, the internal order, police did not ratify and vote on this yet. So that's being pulled off the agenda tonight. Next item, discussion retaining independent counsel due to ethics recusal of the Village of attorney on a matter. Okay, I got a statement here and then we'll go forward. I put this on tonight's agenda because I received a formal complaint from Ms. Mary Priller on Monday, December, December 7th. With correspondence and attachments for the alleged violation of ethic and code of conduct policy, she named three trustees in her complaint. First, I want to start by saying that I read the information along with the transcripts of the meeting and it, what it comes down to are two questions. with the transcripts of the meeting and that what it comes down to are two questions. Question one, are there any policies in place that determines how a person can share public information on the village website, village's Facebook page, or any other media as it stands? Now, anything put publicly, anyone can, as it's put now, anything could be put out in public to share. Question number two, that was brought out of discussion from our last meeting would be how or when or if the entire board should be aware of anything being posted on village's social media, website, web hosting, or printed information. Is there anything in place stipulating those parameters? Don't we trust our professional staff, including the village administrator, with these daily tasks? In light of the pandemic, our small businesses are desperately, desperately trying to keep these businesses above water. We as a village are doing the best we can as a collective social, socially to assist and get the word out to help these businesses. However, I do believe in the future there should be ground rules, best practices. These should be laid out for how social media is used, how the board communicates prior to marketing and social media postings. The question tonight is how do we handle this complaint? Since the complaint involves trustees and our village attorney represents the board of trustees, this leaves us with no clear path on this complaint. At present time, our policy has no provisions on where to send complaints on our ethics policy. Policy currently the board of trustees are the sounding board. So, do we make a ruling on this complaint? Or do we need to appoint an independent counsel or maybe a three-member citizen committee or possibly a hearing judge, i.e. retired judge, or even let our adjudication attorney seek complaints? From the transcripts I read of the meeting, which I read several times, it looks like the village has already released the altogether Aniac campaign and the public website. All Mary Perler did was shared this on her Facebook page, which was not against a rule or policy. The board spent over thirty minutes of discussion calling her out on this ad campaign without her, without her being there to answer or defend her reason for this. Mary has asked to address the board on her complaint and I am going to give her the floor so she can address the board on her behalf. After she's done, I'm gonna open to suggestions on how to resolve this situation effectively and fairly. That being said, I'm gonna let Mary uh, take the floor since she has.
Mayor, point of order, point of order.
Okay.
Before Mary talks. Um, just for the record, because the village attorney has to recuse himself, if we can have why he's recusing himself. For a point of order.
Okay, Bob?
Point of orders, and my second part of my, my point of order is the people that are in Mary's complaint, they also should be recused in Roberts Rules of Order, Article forty-five, Section thirty-five. So, as the village attorney recuses himself, the, the three trustees that are in the complaint should also have to recuse themselves for Roberts Rules of Order. And my, my third part in here, in your statement, we do have precedence of this and I'll, when I read my statement, we do have precedence under you as mayor in uh, a former trustee, that action was taken, and he was a fireman, that sanctions were taken with three trustees. There was no judge, there was no secondary, it was, and you know who I'm referring to, I don't wanna bring a name, but he was a fireman that sat on the board, black shift, gold shift, whatever shift could not make it, and he was sanctioned by the vote of trustees. So there is precedence. So on my three, my three points of, of order, I would like those counted on. The first one is the attorney, he recused himself, and the second is per Roberts Rules of Order, Article forty-five, that trustees have to recuse themselves from comments. And the other one is we have precedence from the firemen, that action was taken by sitting trustees, and you as the mayor put sanctions on them.
I did?
You did, as mayor.
Okay. Alright, so I don't have a, I don't have any counsel to, to uh, go to. Uh, Bob, um, you are a sitting counsel and obviously uh, I rely on counsel, so you can at least uh, give us some guidance.
What I am recusing myself from, to be clear, is the investigation of the board. I think it is inappropriate under the ethical rules that are applicable to attorneys under the rules of court, as we are, we're swearing oath to the Supreme Court and the whole constitution and all that stuff in our first license. But under our original rules of uh, of conduct as, as attorneys, ethical rules, if you will, I cannot represent, I cannot continue to investigate what mounts to maybe half the board, some rule, and at the same time, continue to provide ethical evidence or excuse me, ethical guidance to them on how to follow the law and do these other things. There's an inherent conflict that, and that is the reason I'm recusing myself, and that is all I'm recusing myself from, is just the investigation. This still remains my responsibility, I believe, to shepherd through the process to the extent that it is possible to do that without getting into the merits of whether I believe this, believe whatever the circumstances are in this particular investigation.
And I, I hear your question, but I do believe that even though you're trying to recruit these three board members from uh, from being a part of it, they should be able to respond to the complaint, in, in my opinion. So, um, so that being said, uh.
Okay, respectfully, I'll, I'll disagree and we can move forward.
Okay, I'll have uh, uh, Ms. Perler, uh, if she so kindly would uh, take the floor. She asked to, to be here tonight as far as to represent the case as far as what, what happened and uh, we'll hear her case.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first because uh, it's first moment I'm speaking, um, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Your Honor, Mayor Hanson, members of the board and those participating by Zoom, thank you for allowing me to speak. Hello all, my name is Mary Perler. Today I bring to you Mayor Hanson, for your clarity, experience and leadership, serious ethics violations to the behavior and conduct code by members of your elected board. These grievous violations are black and white, and this is a political lynching, and it is shameless, as shameless as a frog's march, which Trustee Pierce said, his words in effect should happen to me. For those of you listening and the board, I had to Google what a frog's march was. Let me share that with you. A frog's march is being dragged through the streets by officers, like a prisoner, with your arms behind you, your body slumping forward, your stomach nearing the ground, like a frog. Just picture that humiliation. For a resident, a community member, one of good standing, that takes pride in Aniac. For anyone, your mom, your sister, your daughter, should this ever be suggested to anyone? It's humiliating and it's bullying. A trustee that we put our trust in, to look to for decision-making, held to a standard by oath, this is how it works. I ask for a call to vote on these ethics violations of the behavior and conduct code done by Trustee Dominik, Trustee Pierce, and Trustee Yost at the committee of the whole meeting on November twenty-fifth. A formal complaint of these violations, which Your Honor, Mayor Hanson referenced, I was forced to file to clear my good name. This public record is available through a FOIA request to anyone that is interested. With this item on the agenda, a call to vote, a yes or no? Was this a violation? Is the decision at hand? There is no need to appoint an outside counsel. The mention of the outside counsel on my complaint was an alternative. And now that it is on the agenda, I ask for a vote. Going outside the council is not what should be happening. It is costly to residents and the taxpayers. And if I could reflect back onto Mayor Hanson's recent thing, you're looking at how to spend the dollar wisely, the almighty dollar. Um, going outside to counsel is not what should be happening. A code, a how-to, board approved, approved by Trustee Dominik, Trustee Pierce and Trustee Yost. Ironically, it was also championed by Trustee Dominik for its approval, the law of the land by their own bequest. How does a trustee go from supporting an ethics and conduct code, putting it in the tip of her cap, to publicly berating a single parent and working mom? No due process in an open forum to bolster political game. I have done nothing wrong, and I am here as witness to share the workings of their political lynching with their own words, which is in the transcript and it is shown over and over again. Your Honor, Mayor Hanson, you must follow what's in place and fulfill your obligation to the elected office with impartiality. Was the ordinance broken or not? Do not move this around like a political football. And as Trustee Mason had said, there needs to be some recruiting, sorry, mispronouncing, um, where you can't sit on both sides of the fence. This humiliation campaign is as much public as it is malicious, and very public, and very identifiable it is and was, with my name introduced by village staff. To the trustees, as being publicly identified, I was accused by you of stealing, of theft, an offense punishable by law. And you called it by several names. You said stealing of theft of property, of village property, of marketing campaigns, of collateral and intellectual properties. None of that occurs. It goes on. You called it village resources, the brand, a marketing campaign, interactive map, intellectual properties, each of you defining it in your own words. But the facts remain the same. There was no stealing, there was no theft, there was no misuse. There was no intent for personal gain. All, all, that was, all of the said materials, by whatever term you choose to have used, were all in the public domain, in the public for sharing and consumption, put there by the Village of Aniac, grossly blinded by your personal agendas, your political motivation. You have soiled my reputation, both personally and professionally, putting my career and employ, the ability to support my family in jeopardy. Shame on you. Why are you not managing the twenty million dollar budget you're entrusted to? Instead, you're lynching your constituents. Our businesses are suffering. Thousands in our reas, in our region are expected to fail. Our main streets, small businesses are on life support. I am a champion of our downtown businesses, demonstrated in my work and cause throughout the years. I have been tasked with several projects by the village to provide direction and strategy for marketing, business and economic development. I was advancing the goal of the altogether Aniac initiative, sharing it from an officially sanctioned public website, whose goal of the campaign was to help promote businesses. Sharing promotes that goal. To be clear, the content was shareable via a live link set up by the village, a clip from one homepage. Without that link, nothing would be live or would be able to be shared on any platform, including Facebook, by anyone. This is stated by both Administrator Kim and Community Development Director Michael Garrigan. As Administrator Kim said, "I did not authorize getting this out there." I'm sorry, I did authorize getting this out there. Time was of the essence and businesses were screaming to have something happen. So I apologize if that didn't get noticed to the board. Director Garrigan said, "We have been working with Mary Perler," identified. "We launched this technically last week on our village's webpage." Garrigan goes on to say, "One of the things that we have done is we've incorporated a new interactive map that went live. It's actually on our website." Further on, specifically, we worked with our marketing consultant to help small businesses through COVID, all together with a new logo. This is incorporated on our village website, encouraging the community to recognize the critical importance of our small business community. There was absolutely nothing done except support from my end of the village's initiative. No rush to market, no personal gain, no politics. I was being part of the all, of the altogether cause. In Garrigan's words, he was encouraging the community to recognize the critical importance of our small business community, and that is what I did. This transcript further shows Trustee Pierce's words and rush to judgment. I was shocked, shocked, when I opened up Facebook and saw that our big ad campaign was all of a sudden out there, and it's done by a candidate for office. You know, if I had done that with my company, I would have been frog's marched out of my company. Do you still, can you recall that image that I, that I said with that definition? It's certainly not a compliment. He goes on to say, "I was a little relieved to hear Jim say that he had some authorization and stuff out there and such, but at the same time, I think we have to put some kind of controls on our marketing, our intellectual properties, and have it only for the village and not for anything else, especially people's campaigns." He goes on, Trustee Pierce, to say, "We have to have a firm policy in place, firm direction from the board that theft of our property is not acceptable. No how, no way." From Trustee Yost, I think the problem is, not that it was used, but it was used before the village had the opportunity. He goes on to say, "It wasn't in public domain." He further says, "I mean, for all intents and purposes, it was stolen." Again, all on the record, on the audio and in the transcripts, I am personally still in shock that someone who was seeking, seeking an even bigger role in public service would make such an accusation, where he is desiring more trust from constituents. How is that? He goes on to say, "I actually learned some of these pieces came about from a candidate who actually launched all of or parts of the campaign even before the village announced it on her Facebook page. And so it seems to me that, you know, there's a person who's involved with this process, who is taking advantage of the village. If I took advantage, my advantage was to try to help the business community. This was public domain for public consumption." He learned by this, by following my Facebook page. He goes on, "And if the person who shared this three or four days before the village had the opportunity, and before any of us, as Trustee Mason said, had the opportunity to see any of it, is submitting an invoice for her informa, for this information, it's problematic." Just a few more. It's a village resource being used for political purposes. It's a village resource being used for political purposes and taking control of the message out of our hands. And as a trustee, that concerns me. While as a resident in good standing with good ethics, it concerns me that you said I stole. Well, trustee Yost, trustee Dominik and trustee Pierce, what concerns me is that you make slanderous remarks, ru- ruin reputation and accuse a woman in a public meeting of stealing, spying on my Facebook page, saying, am I doing things for my campaign's gain? Again, what you should be concerned with is overseeing a $20 million budget, demonstrating integrity, support of your community and not being bullied. From trustee Dominik, this again is all on the transcript. To find out that we had our new brand for COVID on someone, someone's Facebook page that is running for office, who has been paid to create that, I didn't even know about it. That was happening, that's very disturbing. She goes on, I'm very concerned about the fact that the village board did not have the insight into the new marketing campaign that it was launched prior to the village, plus the interactive map that might develop. That is really phenomenal tool was launched by someone that's not on the board and on her political page. I would just like to reiterate when it is spoken about having insight into a new marketing campaign. Administrator time did say that this was put out by his approval, so there was insight. She goes on to say, well, it may not be a legal issue, but it is certainly an ethical issue. What I ask is trustee Dominik, do you understand what an ethical issue is? She goes on to say, you know, we're told that we're not supposed to be posting that the village should take the lead on it. And then we're learning about something by someone who was being paid to develop it and then claiming it to be hers. I never did such a thing. She goes on to talk about the roles that she has had in corporate America and how you would not do this. I'm curious how those same organizations would view her behavior. She says, I mean, when I worked at Baxter or Abbott in marketing, I couldn't take a campaign and launch it in my own, on my own. So I think that needs to be addressed and she goes on to stress, and I don't think it should be simply a slap on the hand. Trusted Dominik, there was no launching on my own, the village launched it. In conclusion, your honor, Mayor Hanson, the transcript speaks for itself. Nothing was taken out of context. The word frog march is used and it's not a compliment. The law is the law, this is a board approved ordinance. You need to take a vote and have a finding. Thank you, your honor, for the time.
Okay, I'm going to open this up to my board as far as getting some feedback from them as far as direction, as far as how they would like to handle this going forward. We don't, we have a policy that's kind of vague. And what would the ruling be as far as penalty? Things like that, so we can give our trustees rebuttal. I'll start with probably the trustees that aren't named. Trustee Maisick.
Thank you, your honor, and, and you know, your honor, just the guts and I commend you for bringing this to the floor because this was a tough one. And you know, I just want to start out by reading parts of the code of behavior and conduct for the village elected and appointed officials. So I highlighted some parts. Section one in the guidelines. It also constitutes guidelines and standards that are enforceable, not merely suggestions. In there it says sanctions may be acceptable if public officials fail and observe the letter and the spirit. Letter in the spirit, that's important, okay? Then page number two, which is right, it states it again, exercise the rights noted here when and enforce provisions in the code of the corporate authorities has the right to investigate or have investigated the actions of public officials and impose penalty and sanctions in the matter provided here under. So it states right in there that we, we can, you, you with the vote of the board, clearly you can do it, it's been in the past with the firemen. Section C, public officials shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges or verbal attacks, direct inferior attacks or implied attacks upon character or motives. We're trustees, we're not paid to be spies. We don't submit FOIA requests. We don't submit, we don't bring up, holy cow, I saw this about a person's campaign. Well, truthfully, Mary Priller, she's a lady, single mother of two, she's really not a candidate until she's approved to be a candidate, right now, even though she turned a packet in, she's really not a candidate. And, and it's been put to the floor multiple times and we just got another FOIA request for invoices by, by someone with no name on it, requesting another witch hunt. This whole thing was a witch hunt and they're carrying torches. By the aha, so hold on, Mary, hold on, Mary. Let me, let me, let me continue with the ethics policy. H4 of the ethics policy, when, when you're, you're actually, you know, there was a five to one vote. When preparing any meetings, the corporate authority members should to the greatest extent possible, direct questions ahead of time to the village administrator. No one did that, they, they, they went on a witch hunt. Everybody, everybody decided, let's attack this lady because why? Why a frog march? Because this lady is going to run against someone that made that egregious comment. And, and you know what, the best people, if there's any people in the audience, YouTube can play the definition, I'd be more than happy to play the definition. If, if Jerry Johnson, anybody wants to hear the definition on YouTube, I mean, it's pretty bad, it gives the verb and the noun. Go on. This is page five. When making public comments statement, public officials shall make it clear whether they're if authorized to speak on the behalf of the village or corporate authority. So when they're making that comments, is that their opinion or is that the village's opinion? Personal opinions or comments only be expressed if elected officials appointed elected clarify such data not reflect the official position of corporate authorities. Obviously, this wasn't the village, village authority that she should be frog marched. Conduct behavior must be fair and partial, responsible, trustworthy, so the advance the common good of the village, spying on someone's campaign, calling them criminals. I mean, how, I could keep reading that we could sit there and violate every single one of these. It started, this has gone on for a couple of meetings. Act lawfully and objectively, carry out functions of the village unfair by any personal beliefs. That's number eight, section P, carry out the functions of the village unaffected by any personal beliefs, that's a huge one. It's in the document. Mary did, Mary did quite a great job pointing out what was said, I think this transcript because the one point that she left out in the transcript is my conversation when I brought it up is Jim time apologized for me not emailing me the logo. And yet that's when, that's when the witch hunt started. Director Garrigan, first name Mary Priller, by name, I asked, why didn't we get the logo? Jim, administrator time said it, it was released or Mike, I'm sorry, Mike Garrigan said it was released a week ago, this isn't, this is all about the transcript. Administrator time apologized to me for not emailing me the new logo. Okay, then the witch hunt started. Trustee Yo started. Or I'm sorry, I'm backing up. Trustee Pierce started that he saw it Sunday night because he spies on her campaign. Then trustee Yost calls her a criminal. Then trustee Dominik, everything that's in there is the transcript. I emailed the transcript. I urge anybody that's on this meeting to get a copy of the transcript, this is so egregious. We have no choice, no choice mayor, but to take a vote because it violates the ethics now. If anybody in here says, I didn't do it, it's in the transcript. You can't sit there and say, I was shocked, shocked when I opened Facebook, so that I saw that our big camp, we don't spy on other people's Facebook page. We don't spy on other people's campaigns, it's just not, that's not where we're getting paid, we're paid to run the village. Hold it, Jerry comment.
Uh, trustee Paulus, I'll have you comment.
I'm sorry, Paulus.
Um, I don't have any comment right now, mayor, uh, the reason is, is because I think one of the reasons that we're in this predicament is because people made comments without having all the facts and without, you know, I, I hate to have an investigation and spend taxpayer money on it. But, you know, I, some people are already ready to make a judgment based on what they think. Um, and I, I, what, what may seem to be isn't always, and, and I'm just not ready to make any kind of a judgment unless I would hear you know, from somebody other than trustee Maisick as to what was right and what was wrong. So I'm not ready to make a comment either way. Um, if somebody in legal authority uh, would give us some kind of a decision as to what was violated and what wasn't, then maybe I would be willing to make a comment. But at this point, um, I'm not ready to do that, I'm not, I'm not a judge, I'm not an attorney. Uh, I'm not going to sit there and, and try to be the one who is, um, deciding, you know, the legality of all of this stuff, that's not my place. Um, if there was somebody that could do that, then, you know, then I'd listen to their authority, but at this point, I'm not ready to do that, so. Um, I, I would, that, that would be it for me tonight.
Okay, trustee Johnson.
Deep breath here, um, you know, I want to say first of all, you know, this, this is, um, this whole conversation we're having is one of the hardest conversations that, that Measor here as a board member has had to deal with. Um, you know, these are my peers, my constituents. I have a good working relationship with trustee Yost, trustee Dominik and trustee Pierce. Um, I, I am very disheartened by this whole situation. You know, I, I, I sit here and I'm looking at everything and, you know, as much as I hate to say it, is transcripts are the transcripts and it's words that were spoken, spoken by the three. I'm, I'm not here today to, to determine what should, what the punishment should be, but I am here today to determine, not determine, in my opinion, if what we passed in March was violated. I just sat, I read, read those transcripts three, four times. I, I, every time I read them, I hope that it will change and, and it didn't. The more I read it, the more upset I actually became. Um, I look at the ethics that we passed back in March. You go back to the minutes, I said there was a lot of gray areas back then, I, I was concerned that what were the ramifications? Um, trustee Maisick pointed out some, some points that actually I, I pointed out and, you know, me diving into both of these, this was sent by a, a, a citizen of Antioch who sent it out to all of us and, and, and as elected official, I, I felt I, I had to look into all this stuff. What upsets me a little bit more is the fact that, um, there, there, there's a little personal history prior to that meeting. Um, there was FOIA request from some stuff from Mary Priller um, that, that, you know, I kind of raised my eyebrows, was kind of wondering where, where the, the people that FOIA them were trying to go with it. Um, I was told that everything that was FOIAed, um, that I, I'm assuming they were looking into was approved by village staff and so forth, there was nothing sketchy on there. Um, and then the, there's been times when uh, Mary Priller's come up and, and, you know, she's been kind of yelled at, I yelled at, but almost like she was on a witness stand, the way she was questioned. Um, and that was a little disheartening to me as well. Um, and then the meeting came and, and, and this all came, came together at the meeting and it just didn't look good. And, and, and what trustee Maisick said today and, and I, and again, I don't know who did it, you know, I was told there was another FOIA request today hours before we were supposed to have this conversation. Timing is everything, it just doesn't look good even on, on, in regards to that. I'm one person here, I've been on this board for eight years, I, I don't say a whole lot. I call staff, you could ask staff, I call them prior with questions. I see sometimes some of my colleagues go up there, they, they, they ask questions almost like they want to have staff, hey, I gotcha, you know, you didn't know this and try to embarrass staff. I, I'm not like that, I like to ask questions prior. I think if somebody seen, one of the, us trustees seen that post and, and it was told that you guys seen it, why didn't you just call Jim, Jim Kind, I mean, a quick email. You, you guys blasted Jim for not emailing us about that campaign. Why didn't you send Jim an email and say, hey, I, I seen someone else post this on Facebook prior to us? I don't, I don't understand, Jim, can you comment? They would have had the information prior to the meeting. Um, and, and, you know, and then when this all happened, it was the night before Thanksgiving, it's 10:15 at night and I was sitting there and, and scratching my head confused by everything. You know, again, this way I do things, again, I'm not saying it's the right way or the wrong way, but I, I was, you know, kept going back and forth and, and I was sitting there, but I, I just wished that we would got all the facts together, could have ended right there. If we would have said, Jim, can you just give us the facts and, and why on Facebook that was posted, could have ended right there. And, and, and it did not. So in my last thing that I would like, like to say again, is based on the transcripts, the words are the words, I did not say them. It's, those are word for word by some of you that, that said them. Based on what we passed in March, it, there is clear violations. I just learned of today that there is prior precedent to, you know, other trustees being sanctioned. Again, I, I'm not here to say what the ramification is, but that we passed this in March. Five votes to one, trustee Maisick being the one to vote no, and this is something we were supposed to abide by and it's clear violations. Sorry to say that, I really am, but it is as clear as day.
Okay. First off, I, I commend the, I mean, resident Priller, Mary Priller, for having the courage to come here tonight and defend something that she should have never had to be here to defend. Uh, this should have never got to this point. Um, unfortunately, um, she's here defending her, not only her name, her reputation. I, I've known Mary Priller for a little over four years. Uh, met her at, at a Rotary Club. We became friends. She was my campaign manager back in twenty seven, twenty seventeen. Did an excellent job, we became really good friends. Um, she also helped a lot of other folks on this board, um, With political things because she's great at what she does, she's a great marketing person. A great community champion, she loves this community, she's been here a little over 20 years. I don't think she's got a mean bone in her body, I think everything that this woman does is for the betterment of this community. I know that because I've worked closely with her. I know when. We were looking for a marketing consultant for the village. Mary's name come up because she's good at what she does. She worked directly with Jim Kime and also with Michael Garrigan. I don't get involved with these day-to-day operations, that's a staff situation. Again, she's helped a lot of us on this board. In political, uh, uh, on our, on our political agendas as far as outside. Mary Perler has a right as a citizen to do this. And she also has a right to make a living. I am saddened that this happened without, without her being able to defend herself. I will give the opportunity to my, for my board to at least respond. Just because I think it's the right thing to do. But again, I don't think Mary deserved this. Again, I, I concur with my colleagues, trustee Johnson and trustee Masek that. She does have a right to clear something that she did not deserve to get. I will ask. Yeah, well, Mary, you got your hand up, what would you like to say? But.
I, I would like to do a screen share if I could of a document, can I do that?
If you'd like.
Okay, I'm gonna, just give me a second. I'll just take a minute.
Are we holding the trial right here?
Well, you guys held the trial with her the other night. So I think, I, I think we owe it to her at this point, trustee Pierce, really, we do?
Sorry, I'm trying to go back into the, well, anyway, what, can I, can I please read the document and reference it? It's public record.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's a letter from the village of Antioch dated November ninth. Twenty twenty. It's also, if you can hear, can you hear me okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, I, it's, there is also a carbon copy to Jim Kime, the administrator of the village. And also a copy in my file as a contractor. It also was noted that there's correspondence sent to me via email, but I did not receive that. But I do have, if you guys can see.
No, you don't have the right document.
I don't think you have the right document up.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll close that out. Sorry. Okay, sorry, so, um, yes, I, what I wanted to, I had, those were my notes. But anyway, what I wanted to share, so this is the letter and I'll read it.
No, your speaker's not working right. You cover. You covered it.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you for your patience. Says, dear Mary. Confirming our meeting, I want to thank you for coming to Village Hall and speaking with myself. And village administrator Jim Kime about your work for the village of Antioch. I want to reiterate and reassure you that your work for the village continues to be of the highest regard. There have been many accolades from community members and others involved with our organization expressing the high quality you set forth. In all of your projects, from a skill standpoint to best practices and protocols. We understand the concern and stress you felt. As a business owner and a person of high standards, having learned through a community-wide public forum of a recent request. From a trustee. For a board review of your invoices. For services rendered for your more than three years of exemplary involvement. I want to underscore and again, share what was stated at the meeting. There was no need for an investigation per the trustee request made to administrator Kime's office. Administrator Kime vetted and reviewed directly. Or indirectly with his direction, all of your monthly invoices and approved them for processing. With zero incidences. They fully correlate to services requested. Agreed upon compensation and are done in the same acural standards that we hold ourselves to. As with our village, one's reputation in the community is so important. We look forward to our continued beneficial working relationship. Sincerely, Mayor Lawrence Hanson. Your honor, thank you for summarizing. What was said at our meeting. When we had a chance to. Discuss again. A situation that I am shocked and saddened that has come up. But the reason I wanted to introduce this and talk more about it is again, today as I learned. Here is that again, my invoices are being FOIAed along with other communication. And I don't know what else needs to be done. Again, you're not running the village, these people that are doing this. Not only is it unfair and unjust. There's huge work centers related to these people that are pulling requests. And they need to do that because that's what's been asked of them. But as a village, do, do we have the resources and should we be spending those resources? To continuously revisit and harass a person? I don't, I, I, when people take an oath and, and the word trustee. It's a position I'm running for that I value, I, I, I can't understand the dichotomy, the imbalance here. So I appreciate you letting me add on to this because it came about during this conversation. And it was very, very important that I share that. And again, it's public record. And you know, anyone who's listening or anyone here, feel free to get a copy. It, it has been on file with the village since November ninth. Thank you.
All right. All right, that being said, I will let the trustees speak, trustee Pierce. You gotta turn your mic off, huh?
Is it turning along on the, the meeting still or has he left?
He's here.
Okay, my first question to him is, is his recusal. My understanding is not only do you represent the village board, you represent the mayor. And you represent the taxpayers and the residents of Antioch. And to recuse yourself is recusing yourself from representing the taxpayers of Antioch. And that, that saddens me, so I, I just want to ask you some questions. You said your, your recusals only for these facts here alone. Correct?
What I said was, I am not in a position to investigate the facts. Comment on the facts, express opinions on the facts.
Okay.
That's, that's it.
Can you provide testimony in this inquiry or investigation as to? What these ultimate sanctions are for the ethics ordinance and state law and ethics, the village code?
I think I can answer the question generally, yes, that if there are violations of the, the. Ethics ordinance, the, which was adopted in two thousand and ten. And the ethics resolution that was adopted in twenty nineteen, the only actual sanctions that are allowed under law are censure.
Okay, so it'd be a censure vote by the board, thank you. So we, if we had a separate investigation, we would spend separate tax dollars to have a separate attorneys. We would then have staff pulling more stuff that is being decried that they're pulling already. And in the end, we would have a censure vote and whether it passed or not, it would depend upon the board and how they vote. Is that correct? Turning along?
Procedurally, that is correct.
Okay, so thank you, turning along. You know, I'm sitting here listening to this tonight. And, and all I can think is, what happened when I filed complaints to the mayor about board members? Where did those go? They didn't go anywhere, but all of a sudden, because it's now. I get, I get. This trial in place tonight that disagrees with what I said. And if my words hurt somebody, I apologize if they're offended. But I, as a trustee, when I have questions put to me by taxpayers in the village and residents and citizens in the village. I have an obligation to ask those questions and maybe I don't ask them correctly. But I have that obligation to ask them. And one thing that started me going the other night was when the village administrator said. It wasn't released how I expected to be released and I didn't know it was being released, if I remember correctly. So my question to turning along is as we're spewing these transcripts out. Can we also release the video from the Zoom meeting? I do have that clipped down and I'd be willing to share my, 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 my YouTube video of that meeting. So the public could see what was actually said and how horrendously it was said. Because I watch it over and over and over and over to see what I said wrong. And as far as. What I see is three trustees asking questions about what's going on in the village. And that's their job and that's their duty. And people may not like it when we ask questions, but we have an obligation to ask questions. And what I see here tonight is a blatant attempt to shut down three trustees. And muzzle them and take away their constitutional rights. And I think it is wrong and if I file complaints, I would like them to have the same attention. And if people want to FOIA them, they are, they, there is FOIABLE complaints that I have filed. And I would ask them to do so also because they're quite interesting. Instead of embarrassing the village, I accepted the, however they handle them because I didn't want to embarrass the village. Obviously, other people, for whatever reasons, want to embarrass the village. And I apologize, Mary Perler feels like she was picked on. But people were asking me questions and when this village administrator said it wasn't released how I expected to, then I said something. I wasn't the first one to bring it up. So if you want to convict me and give me a censure, you guys go for it. I'm, I'm willing to fight and play games just like you guys are and that's all I'm gonna say.
Mayor.
Trustee Masek.
Yeah, this is, you know, this comment to go back, to look back and, and, and what trustee Pierce is saying, the accused. You know, Perler and, and not taking responsibility of, of frog marching. And, and you know. That's an old Navy term of, of, of saying she should be beaten up, you know. You know, a complaint, you know, if he wants to sit there and he's gonna fight back. You know, accusing, accusing Mary Perler of doing something wrong. I mean. If I can put a stop to it at the end, you know. I, I complained about people weaponizing Facebook. And, and this is where it got, nobody, nobody, everybody wants to put their opinion out on Facebook. And, and, and you know, the, the comment, you know. We look, I don't look at Facebook, you know, but everybody was, it started with. You know, this whole thing started, if you want to go in the past with someone liking a Facebook page. We should not have political speech. In, in, in village boardrooms and then it started with. My gosh, the person that's accusing FOIA requests against me, then he FOIA requested, you know, all this other stuff. And then, you know, where does it end? The job of a trustee is to sit there, get information and vote. You know, this is an attack on this lady. You know, she's a mother of two children and he's gonna try to, try to make it where the mirror, mirror doesn't shine on him. It just doesn't make sense. That's, you know, that's all I gotta say. If he didn't like the ordinance that was passed, he should have done like I did, voted no. But what I read there is clearly, now, now, we can sit there and find, find them and, and find them. Just like trustee Johnson said, clearly in writing, these three broke the rule. Clearly broke the rule and it's not against one trustee, the other trustee of equal power. Because some meetings, we put our big, big boy or big girl pants on and we have heated debates. This is an attack on a citizen of Antioch. This is an attack where she was accused of being a criminal, a criminal, criminal. She was accused of, of being frog marched. That's a term I would not even use. I use some bombastic words, but I would never accuse saying, if I did that, I should get beat up. I would get beat up for that, meaning she should get beat up. That's what frog marching is. I mean, you can't turn what's said in the transcript and say, I'm innocent, words are words. You know, we, we gotta make a finding tonight, pure and simple. You can, you can sweet talk everything out of it, there's never been a transcript. So this is getting, this is getting out of hand. You know, make a finding, they, they violated it. Whether you have another hearing of, of a censure, that's a separate meeting. But we can, we can make a finding, is this lady, did, did, did these three people, by calling her a criminal? Did they, did they dishonor her? It's obvious she was disowned her. Obvious, obvious in the words, she took the time to have this thing transcribed the words. Now we can post this out on Facebook and weaponize Facebook just like everybody else does. And like just the same words that were in the transcript that trustee Dominik said in the transcript. When she put a bully post out there, well, that's my opinion, I told her, keep your opinion yourself. Maybe, or maybe you should sit on your opinion. And when I stopped the meeting. I think, I don't post stuff on Facebook, they're just ridiculous. It's a child's game. This ma, this lady, she's a single mother of two, raising two kids, her honor was harmed. You tried to take her ability to earn money. And we have no choice, no choice. But to find her innocent of, of charges. And find three people that violated the ethics code, it's clear in writing, black and white.
Your honor, I'm gonna respond, I'm not saying I'm innocent of all charges ever held against me by this board. What I am saying is I will clearly accept any investigation or inquiry that you want to do before us. And I think you will find that this, I am within, well within state law. And it may not be liked and may not be appreciated, but I am within the state law and the constitution. And, and representing the village residents by asking questions. And I still feel this is an attempt to muzzle me and to shut me down and to get me out of office. And I'm deeply saddened, no, sorry, I am talking right now and you constantly are, you're, you're gonna hold the trial. There is the judge here, in your opinion, he is controlling the meeting. I am here to say, if you want to hold an inquiry, hold an inquiry, I'll vote yes on holding inquiry. If you want to, but you will find that though it wasn't like what we said. It was within the law and it was, it was correct to ask questions. And if you guys want to go back into draconian dictionary and pull out the version of frog marching. My version is where they walk you out of your office with your box in your hands and you go home. That's my version of frog marching, where they walk you out in front of all your employees.
I got Larry.
Let me, let me, let, hold that.
I'm sorry, I'm still talking.
Somebody's gotta.
Let somebody else talk between, besides, like Mary Perler and me.
Something, let me just, let me lead here for one second. You guys are arguing amongst yourselves. We're forgetting about the reason why we're here. We're not here because of Ed Masek, we're not here because of Scott Pierce, we're not here because of me. We're here to clarify and, and clear up a misconception. And somebody getting accused of doing something that she did not do. And the fact of the matter is. We all would go against her if in fact, she didn't do it right. She did nothing wrong here. So you guys just jumped to conclusions, you, you, you guys did not get the facts unfortunately. I did not set this up. did not get the facts, unfortunately. I did not set this up. I get a complaint, and that's why the complaint's here. We've never had this before with us, with somebody working for us as a private contractor and/or a citizen that we've ever, this is, this is the first time this has happened since I've been on the board. And all I want to do is clear it up, clear her reputation. All she's asking for is to say, hey, you know, I'm a good person, I'm a good citizen, I didn't deserve this. If you would just listen to what she's saying here, she's crying out to say, you guys made a mistake, and all I'm looking for is for you people to recognize the fact that, that I did nothing wrong. That's the way I'm hearing it. And again, she represented this village in a good way. She's represented everybody sitting on this board at one time or another. She worked for every single one of us. And now she's here tonight, just defending her own character, her own reputation, and I think that's what she's here tonight. Because nobody else is going to do it for her. Because obviously, she heard a lot of things. Go ahead.
Your Honor, can you let the other people talk, the other accused, you let everybody talk except for Daniels and Mary Dominiac?
Jerry?
Well, I just want to comment real fast, Scott, real fast, just on you. I have no problem with your questions at all. I mean, I, you know, if anybody has questions at a village board meeting, I mean, it, it's a good thing. It's not a bad thing. I had the problem with the direct accusations. That was my problem. My, my second problem is, you know, I, I, I sit here on the board, and I hear trustee to trustee, a lot of arguments. Sometimes it's very entertaining. Sometimes I'd shake my head. The problem I have, again, is, you know, that, that there was, we didn't have the facts. There wasn't someone here to defend themselves or to give us the facts. And that, and that's where I think the difference is a little bit, is the arguments, trustee to trustee, you know, it, it is what it is. We're here to defend ourselves. That was something different. And Scott, I'm not saying you did anything illegal, and you probably are within, in the law. Again, it's based on Mary's Pearl, Pearl's letter, is we had, we, I voted yes too. And, you know, I, I'm now looking back and maybe wish I voted no on this, this, that, the way the ethics is written or whatever, we passed it. And the question is whatnot, whether it was legal, what you did, could it make, you might not broke the law, but did we break that resolu, did you break that resolution? That, that you voted yes on, and I voted yes on. That's the question I ask.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh, Trustee Yost, I know you've been patiently there, so, um, comment, please, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for me, this is not about politics, and it shouldn't be. Um, I think, as many of you know by now, this is my last meeting as a board member. I have no intention of pursuing, uh, any, any political office here in Antioch going forward. My comments on that night were intended to draw attention to what I saw as a pattern of activity that I believed was inappropriate, to bring some sunlight to the process, where I thought it was lacking. I feel strongly that this was my responsibility as a trustee, to advocate for integrity within the government. Okay? Now, we've heard some things tonight, and, and, and you talk about getting all the facts. And the reality is that Trustee Maisick and, and Trustee Johnson, and I don't believe it was malicious, but you don't have all the facts. Okay? Um, the matters that we were discussing that night were directly related to an established pattern of conduct that I had seen. But I never asked any questions about it, because I never saw those, those particular acts, uh, Facebook, where there was some comment made about the use of, you know, village, uh, resources for political activity. So I want to talk a little bit about what I see as the three facts, kind of the, the three, uh, components that have brought us to this point tonight. So we, we, we have a contractor who works for the village, um, on communications for, for the village, marketing material for the village. This individual is also a candidate for village trustee, and she also is a sitting member of an elected official board members campaign. By all accounts, I don't question this. She performs the work which she's contracted for well. The quality of her work product has never been in question. It wasn't in question that night. Okay? On numerous occasions, concerns have been raised during board meetings regarding inappropriate political posts, as I would just refer to, that were made using village reef resources involving the same contractor. Sorry, there's an amber alert. Despite this, I never commented on the matter during the board, since I never personally noticed the activity. Still, the fact did occur, and, and still, still the fact that this did occur is something I found troubling. Now, here's where the facts differ. Contrary to what Trustee Maisick has suggested and what Trustee Johnson have stated, on the day of the post that is in question, I did in fact reach out to staff to inquire if the information being used on the candidate's campaign page had been released by the village. On that very day, it was a Friday evening, and I did reach out to staff to inquire as to whether or not it had been released by the village, since it was my understanding that based on the meeting agenda, that the board was going to have the opportunity to review the information before it was publicized. I was told during this lengthy discussion that the marketing material question had not in fact been released. In my mind, this represented a significant ethical issue and a pattern of using government resources that needed to be addressed. So despite the accusations being made, my comments were not an uneducated witch hunt or an attempt at bullying, period. Now, what I will say is, if I was misinformed by staff, and by, based on what I'm hearing, I was, if I was misinformed by staff with regard to the release of the specific information that I raised an issue on, then I do sincerely and wholeheartedly apologize to Ms. Priller. That would have been, that is undeserved. Um, but again, my actions and my statements were based on the facts that I had at the time, and based on conversations that I had with staff with relation to that particular piece of information. And I thought that was trumbled, troubling. I didn't think any other person who happens to be running for office should have access to a piece of information that they use in their campaign ahead of anybody else. If it's in the public domain, it's all fair game. That's not what I was told. In fact, I was told explicitly it was not. So again, wholeheartedly apologize to Ms. Priller. If the information that I was given is incorrect, then the comments that I made were based on false information, and clearly those were incorrect. However, I do think that this kind of, it, it does illustrate a need. And this is just a general statement, that if we're going to be involved in the village for monetary purposes, as a, as a means of earning money, we're going to engage in politics, we're going to run for office, we're going to act as a chair person of somebody else's campaign, then I, I simply ask that we take bigger steps to be even more careful than the average person. And that's what I'm advocating for, that we have an obligation to make sure there's no appearance of impropriety. And when people are, put themselves in those positions to create an, an appearance of impropriety, it reflects poorly on the village. And I think it was my job as a trustee to point that out and make sure that the, the village's image was not tarnished by that. So those are the facts. That is what happened. And there was an attempt to validate the information before it was brought to the board. So this is what happened, again. If that information is incorrect, and I hate with, when people say that, because it is sincere. I simply, at this point, do not know when that information was actually released. It is not clear to me. If it is, if it's shown to me that that information was in the public domain, I would even, I would happily write an apology letter to Ms. Priller. But I don't have that information today, and this is my concern. That's all I have to say, Your Honor.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Yost, uh, Trustee Dominiac, you're up. If you'd like this comment.
Uh, yeah, I would. I mean, I'm not feeling well because of the COVID, so my remarks will be brief. Um, thank you, Your Honor. As a threshold matter, I think it's important to take into account the entire transcript of the proceedings rather than just the redacted transcript. I believe there are significant facts to take into account by looking at the entire transcript. Um, first of all, during the meeting that is at issue, Trustee Maisick was the first trustee to question if the logo was shared in an email to the trustees and commented that it was not sent and was, quote, "just thrown out there," adding that "stuff is done without board acknowledgement." So you know, it's a little disappointing, kind of embarrassing, unquote. After Trustee Maisick's com, comments, "My fellow trustees and I were called upon by the, by you, Your Honor, for our comments." Administrator Kime advised he had no idea that it was going to be landing there or be announced in that fashion, and said that he was shocked as well, adding that he did not authorize it. Um, following comments by the other trustees and myself, Your Honor, asked Attorney Bob Long what could be done to correct this. Attorney Long acknowledged that there are things in this that could have been done better. And I think we're learning tonight that, um, the information that wasn't shared was probably the crux of this, and went on to explain that in this age of electronic communication, it is difficult to be proactive, but rather is often reactive. Your Honor then commented that we cannot go forward like this. None of my comments regarding the issue Ms. Priller is questioning were made with mal intent, but rather were offered in concern regarding the issue of not sharing with the trustees prior to some public dissemination. In other words, um, as Attorney Long noted, we need to be reactive to this situation. And, um, again, not having the information that there was information out in the public domain, not being aware of that, um, I would also extend an apology to, uh, Ms. Priller, um, uh, because I was making those comments based on not having that information from staff. I suggest that the best use of our village financial resources is investing in its people rather than using the funds of Antioch citizens to retain an investigator of any type. I suggest that we come up with a plan to address how best to communicate among the board so as to avoid any future issues. And, um, that's all I have to say, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Um.
Mayor.
Your Honor.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to point out that I was misquoted. And, and two hours, 30 minutes, and 50 seconds, Trustee Dominiac misquoted me off the transcript. I said, and I quote, okay, this is the first time I've seen the logo. And I don't pay attention to Facebook. Maybe, maybe we should spend time to read this. Because then, let me get to page three. Then, on Bob Long, Bob Long basically, and I can summarize this, she's summarizing her advantage, and, and he basically said there was no crime committed. We don't copyright our material. She's such, I never said that. I made a comment that it's embarrassing, you can read the transcript, that it's embarrassing that we don't get copies of the logo. If, if you, if, if you read it, Mike Garrigan, at the beginning of the transcript, he says, and it's important, we, we launched this technology last week, last week, in the transcript. We launched it last week. Okay? Then Jim Kine, when his apology after I made without the board's acknowledgement, without the board's acknowledgement, that I never saw the logo, I didn't care that it was, I, I had no question of when the timing is. I just said, hey, when did we create this? Okay? No question of, in the transcript that I read, that I made any comment of the launch time. So I was, I, I've been totally misquoted on that. I just wanted to correct the record.
Okay. Trustee Pierce, you're up.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, you know, I can sit here and fight with Trustee Maisick all night. We've proven that him and me can go toe to toe, and we do quite good at it. And I must admit, I admire his tenacity at times. But, um, you know, the facts I had that night were that it had been done beforehand. As, as Trustee Yo says, it was not. And I would be forced to apologize also to, uh, Mary Priller, which I would be willing to do. But I do think we need to work out something where we have a good commu, better communication on this board going forward, either with the existing board or other boards in the future, um, however they are. And, and that's all I can say. I do think that all complaints that are received should re, get the same equal treatment. And I don't feel that treatment has been received by anybody at this board tonight. So, um, to, to Mary Priller, if I misunderstood the facts, I do apologize to you. Trustee Maisick, I'll fight you another day. Not today, I've had enough. And I'm sure you have too.
Trustee Paul. Mayor, 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 do you hear that? He's threatening me again, like, just like he did Mary Priller. He wants to fight me, he wants to frog march me.
Hey, Trustee Paul.
One of the reasons I didn't make a comment at that meeting and why not make a comment tonight is because I don't have all the facts. I didn't have all the facts that night. Um, I still don't think I have all the facts tonight without, you know, having, um, the, the transcript and the ordinance or the resolution, all that stuff in front of me to go through one by one. Um, but the, the one thing I, I think we need to, to watch out is that, Trustee Pierce mentioned about, um, having the right to ask questions. That's, that's correct. Everybody has the right to ask questions. But I think there were a couple of times in that meeting where people made judgments. And when you make a statement, like, if I did that where I worked, or if I did that here, um, you know, I would have been walked out, or I would have been, uh, reprimanded, or whatever it might be. Now you're, you're making a decision, um, and you're, you're, you're making the, uh, the case that that person was in the wrong, um, right off the bat, because you're not, you're, you're not all of a sudden asking questions. You're already making a judgment at that point. Um, so we got into a point where people were asking questions, but then they got into the point where when you say, if I did that, I would have, and, and so at that point, you're making a judgment on a person where that's not what we should be doing. What we should be doing is getting all the information, getting the clarifications that we need, um, but then leaving that kind of stuff out of it. That, and, and I didn't have all the information. In fact, a lot of that stuff, I didn't even know was happening, and I wasn't a, at any point going to make a comment in that meeting. But again, I think that's, that's where I am tonight, is, you know, I'm not ready to sit here and make any kind of a vote or a decision on anything, because although I, I think there were some things, um, that probably shouldn't have been said, and, and I think people are maybe realizing that, um, I, I still don't think I have everything all tied together. So I, I just think that we, we need to watch our comments as far as, um, you know, when, whatever we're doing, once we make that judgment statement, um, we're already making our decision before we have all the information. And that's, that's all I want to say.
Uh, Mary, get your hand up. Can't hear your speaker?
It's off.
Your mic's off. Mic's off.
Sorry, thank, thank you. Um, I just wanted to add to Trustee Yo's comment of the facts. Um, he's welcome to check with the State Board of Elections. I no longer am in the capacity of the chairperson of Your Honor's campaign. Um, uh, I understand and see where that would be, um, first of all, very time, you know, time consuming and difficult, but a, a potential conflict. Um, so I've been removed. So when he states the word fact, um, I just want the board and people listening to understand that I am running for office. I look forward to that opportunity to listen to our residents and hopefully be able to be on the other side of the table. But I do recognize that I can't do that. Um, I think, Mayor Hanson, you, um, have done very valuable work. But, you know, unfortunately, I, I can't be in that capacity. So I have been officially removed as the chairperson. So, um, Dan, um, it's not, you know, fact, um, I just wanted to state that, because then again, it feels like we're revisiting this again. And I think there needs to be some more homework done.
Well, I, I would ask to, with all due respect, because, you know, those are public. Okay, well, uh, on the day that I, uh, the day that this happened, you were still listed. So I would, I would look to see the details and the filing and check the dates. So.
And I think.
And I'm willing to accept that. So.
Okay, but I, I would like to say, as far as my understanding, you know, and, and just like all of you, there, you know, are things you do need to learn. But it's my understanding, until we handed in our packets today, and I met other candidates, and it was a great process, and I was, I'm very excited. But until these, um, petitions and things get vetted, I am. I am what you would call a prospective candidate. So when you're reflecting back and mentioning as fact that I am the chairperson of Mayor Hanson's, um, you know, on record, uh, for his campaign or of his campaign, that's absolutely right. I'm a resident. That's my choice to do that. So, you know, understandably, please don't co-mingle.
No, and, and you're absolutely, but the, the problem is, is that when you co-mingle the three things, right? As a person who is actively, actively seeking office and promoting that and, and presenting yourself in that way, and you're serving in the capacity of a chairman of, of, of a member of this board, and you're also a contractor. My point there is that it puts a greater responsibility on you to make sure that the amount of sunlight between you and each of those roles is sufficient, right?
With the sun, with the sunlight, you know, to have a metaphor, you know, we could pull out the SPF fifty or the SPF one hundred. You know, everything I do is always with integrity. And I think what is happening here and has been happening is there seems to be some victimization of that you, you know, can't do more than one role. And, um, it, you know, when you say the word fact and it's not a fact, the point here is it's still, it goes back to the board and Your Honor. It's a black and white issue and it needs to be addressed whether there was a violation here. And I just ask in closing that there is a decision and a vote here.
So that I can correct my facts, can you tell me what date you resigned as the chairperson of the mayor's, uh, campaign?
Mayor, I don't think that's relevant. She's not a candidate until she's, her, her, her stuff's accepted.
She just made it relevant. She's.
This has nothing to do with, uh, chairmanship or any ship. She's a private citizen at the same.
She's a private citizen and you're not, you're not the police officer, Dan.
Now we're putting her back on trial again.
Yeah, you're, you're doing another.
Your Honor, this could go on and on all night.
Someone wants to make a motion for a sanction?
I'll make them. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we agree to what Mary wants. We want to find these three trustees violated the ethics violation. That's all we're looking for. I think that's all she's looking for, correct, Mary?
Absolutely. I, 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 I honor those that have considered an apology. Uh, I look forward to having an apology and I feel as a resident.
A mother of two, a lady, a citizen of Antioch, you just want a finding. We're not.
Yes, I do. I do.
Or anything else.
Yes.
Would you accept a, uh, an apology? I mean, I mean, because obviously.
Are you asking me a question? I'm sorry.
Yes, I mean, obviously, I think the board here that you claim, you know, Sid did what you said they did as far as the grant transcripts and things. I heard three apologies, strong apologies, that did not get the facts. Would that be enough to clear, would, with, with that clear, clear any misconceptions?
The misconceptions and, and that part of it, if I can say, i- is for the vote. And that's where your board and you and the leadership and what you've all been entrusted to do comes into play. And I trust that that will work itself out. I do think a, as part of this, you know, human world where we're all facing such struggles, whether we're going to get ill, whether our loved ones are going to become ill, whether we have jobs. I mean, there's so much going on in our universe. Of course I would accept an apology. I think there's been movement on apologies here. And I think there's been some wiggle room on behalf of some people. So these are professional people who, who understand how to apologize and build relationships, or you wouldn't be on this board. So I think you should put your best efforts forward and, and, you know, let's move forward. Let, let's, let's have apologies and let's have a, have a vote. And that, and that's what I think our constituent, you know, constituents, or I don't want to use the word constituents because I'm not, you know, in office. But I, that's what taxpayers, residents like myself deserve.
Mary, just to be clear, you want to, you want to vote on a finding? That's all you want?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I'm sorry if it, if it didn't come across the way. Absolutely. That's what I want. Thank you.
I'll make, I'll make a motion on the vote for finding that the three, three people she put in her complaint did violate the ethics.
Your Honor, so Ed can make his motion. I'll withdraw my motion to adjourn which came in first. Uh, so let him go.
I'll second the motion to vote on just the finding.
Okay, and, uh, uh, trust, uh, being attorney long, it sounds like the, the three trustees can't vote on this, obviously, because, correct?
I shouldn't vote on theirs. I would suggest you vote individually rather than as a group, though. It's more procedurally correct.
So, so I, I misunderstood what attorney along said because it sounded to me like, uh, the mayor said that those who have accused us would vote on us.
Right. Be more clear.
What I said was, my attempt to say was, you can't vote for your, for or against yourself.
So only three can vote then, right?
Said only, you can't vote for or against yourself. And procedurally, I believe this motion is incorrect because I don't see how the ethics ordinance talks in terms of uh, a group violation. It doesn't have, use the term. So I think it has to be done on an individualized basis.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll do three motions. So I'll, I'll take, uh, to the right of me first, I make a motion to find Scott violated the ethics. I use the word frog march.
Is there a second?
Hey, I'm sorry, Your Honor, can I ask for clarification? We're talking, the code of conduct, the resolution for court, code of conduct is what we're, I, I believe is what the motion is.
Is that correct, Maisick?
When we passed in March. Do you want me to read the exact?
I, I just want to be clear because there are, there's, there's different documents here.
When we passed in March, Dan.
That would be the code of conduct.
Right.
Can you clarify your motion, please, for the clerk?
That would be, I'm fine, I, I'm, the we're all monkeyed out of order. Miss Fine, I make, my motion is to find trustee Pierce that he violated the code of behavior and conduct for the village elected and appointed officials.
And I just want to make a record that I'm going to abstain on all of these votes for, at this point, so. But I'm going to abstain on these at this point because I don't have all of every, all the information that I would need.
So Bob, it, it'll, will go nowhere then, right? Because there's not enough.
True, that's what it seems like.
So if he's already up, uh, gonna abstain, it's probably no reason to call for a vote unless you want to just go on record.
You can have, you, you can have the vote. I don't know what it'll prove, but you can have the vote.
Well, un- unfortunately, I mean, since I did pass this back in March, um, I'm, I'm gonna sec, I mean, you know, it says right in here that this is not merely suggestions. And a resident, you know, did email us, I will second trustee Maisick's, uh, motion.
Okay, so you got a motion and a second, so they'll have a clerk take roll. Oh, he can't vote on it.
I have to abstain per Bob Long.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
The, the village attorney.
The motion is about Mr. Pierce.
So trustee Pierce, you abstain?
I'm recusing myself. I'm not even abstaining. I can't vote.
Trustee Maisick?
Yes.
Trustee Yoast?
No.
No.
Trustee Dominia?
Abstain.
What's that?
I said abstain.
Okay, I heard somebody else say something too before that. Was that you, trustee? Yoast, did you say something? You're not. Yes, yes.
Your Honor?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, it's just so you're, you're kind of, you're kind of like stopping.
Yeah, I've got a bad connection.
Okay, go ahead. You wanted to say something?
I believe he indicated he wished to change his vote to abstention.
Okay, so we got, uh, Pierce, Yoast, and Dominia abstained steps.
Yes.
Okay.
Paulus?
No, no, wait. Pierce was a recusal. He recused himself.
Okay, he recused himself. And then you got abstention and then two of those, correct?
Trustee Maisick voted yes. Trustee Yoast abstained. Trustee Dominia abstained.
Okay.
Trustee Paulus?
I abstain.
Abstain.
Trustee Johnson?
Hi.
So we got two yeses, uh, one recuse and three abstain. It dies, right? At this point?
You're gonna put your motion on just for the record.
And I would say yes, based on the facts.
Under the case of Prosser versus the state, uh, the village of Fox Lake, poorly decided decision, but it says that abstentions go with the prevailing side. So the, the motion carries.
Okay, my second motion would be Daniel's violated behavior and conduct for the village elected and appointed officials.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Okay, now, roll call.
Pierce?
I abstain.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yoast?
I'm recusing.
Dominia?
Abstain.
Paulus? Johnson?
Hi.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
The third margin would be trustee Dominiac violate the code of behavior and conduct for the elected and officials?
Second to motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Pierce?
I abstain.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yoast?
Stain.
Dominia?
Recused.
Paulus? Johnson?
Hi.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Okay. That's, um, three yeses. Okay, carries. Okay, um, we do have that vote. Um, that brings us back to going forward with this policy. Uh, my opening statement, I mentioned that we have some work to do on this policy. Obviously, uh, you know, at the state, we can, we got the state policy that has some, some other things on it. So I'd like to, uh, bring this policy back to the board for reconsideration as far as to look at. So we can, uh, try to, so we don't put ourselves in this position in the future or any boards in the future.
I agree.
I mean, I just think it's, nobody would have dreamed that this would, was, was why we would do this. So, um, nobody likes this, nobody likes this at all and, and, uh, and I'm sorry this happened to, uh, uh, Ms. Priller. And, uh, hopefully, uh, going forward, we all learned a lesson here that, uh, let's get the facts. And let's get, before we, uh, jump to conclusions, uh, so. That's all I.
One more comment.
Your Honor.
I would also like to say that, um, uh, you know, part of this, uh, staff was on trial because by, by pulling invoices and, and things like that, we're questioning our administrator. We're questioning our, our financial people. We're, uh, we're questioning, um, our business development person. Um, because we don't trust what they're doing, making decisions. And, and I think they've done a great job. Um, and they, they reviewed all of the invoices that came in. And they're, you know, they're the ones doing the job every day and, and administrator Kime and Joy and Michael Garrigan were, were working with, uh, Mary Priller to do all of this. And, um, and, you know, we're questioning their ability um, by moving forward and, and questioning their decision-making and what they were doing. So, uh, I just want to, um, you know, sort of stand up for them a little bit because they don't have a voice here. But, uh, you know, we need to let them do their jobs. Um, I think it was, I don't know who said it earlier. We're on the board to make, make, uh, policy decisions and that. We're not in here to run day-to-day businesses and, and, uh, we need to trust our, our administrators. So, uh, all of the administrators.
If that was Ed, then I make a motion to adjourn.
Well, I.
Wait a minute, I, I just think trustee Pierce had a, had his hand up real quick, trustee Maisick.
I, I do have a question for Bob Long, our attorney who's representing the board as a whole. Question whether this meeting was properly noticed tonight, and I would like a formal finding on that from, from you and the, the, your law firm. I do not believe that this final item was properly noticed. Um, so I think, um, uh, however, that should be remedied, should be remedied correctly.
In the context of?
In the context of the, the notice, last item on the agenda was a discussion on the village attorney uh, recusing himself instead it was a, uh, a trial and a conviction, um, and votes that weren't noticed. So.
I'll give you an opinion.
Okay.
Look for a motion to adjourn.
Most of my trustee Maisick, do I have a second? Second, my trustee Johnson, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.